All right, we can resume our workshop on the general plan designation EDC. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read everything and got some more comments, we can keep chewing on that a little bit. Who wants to begin? Mr. Leclerc?
Thank you. We currently are working on the economic development corridor chapter. My notes indicate that we ended up on page five. We dealt with what I think from my notes are paragraph C and D at the top of the page. I would also like to note, however, that there were conversations about cultivating pot. And we have modified, I have put into the material about outdoor cultivation of that as being a prohibited activity. And I also, I can't give you the exact page because that's in the electronic version that is still waiting for all of your comments and then we go to it. And I also note on page 19, you had made some comments about the northern gateway, the land use mix, that table, that's 28 dash C, and that you had suggested the land use mixes go from 0 to 25 percent and so forth, and I've included that in that table. Other than that, I believe you are on number two on page five, and that's where you can begin your conversation. Again, your format is looking at it, and if someone has comments or concerns on that page, you raise them, discuss them, give guidance to staff, and if nothing on that page, you go to the next page.
All right, so we left off giving, or rather saying that we wanted to read the entire document, and were there any subsequent changes to the first five pages as a result of getting through everything that anybody found? I found a couple of questions. In the description for the southern gateway on page four, the last sentence there, "Small independent commercial and service venues which may be rural oriented" will be included in the EDC southern gateway. For my edification, the EDC southern gateway is the entire purple section, south of Scott Road, all the way extending, what is that probably? Paradise Valley Road, what is that road there on the east end?
Can't tell you the name of the road, but yes, you are correct, it's that area.
I guess my only concern, I mean, obviously, you know, rural oriented businesses, you definitely want to have in that area, being in close proximity. However, you probably don't want, and I'm sure that the market's going to guide this, you correct me if I'm wrong, but you probably don't want a Dan's Feed and Seed in the middle of a business park. So how do you, how do you guide that the right way? And like I said, maybe I'm wrong in just thinking like this, I'm sure the market's going to dictate. They're not going, you know, somebody's not going to build something like that right there.
Yeah, the economies of that probably wouldn't, wouldn't be a good choice on their part, but it would more likely be subject to your review anyway, and you could make that decision that it's an inappropriate use for that particular location.
I already agree that we should take the rural oriented out because along here, we're looking for good light, commercial, industrial to be there.
And that's why I ask if it goes all the way out to here, I mean, I can picture a feed store out here on the end, like near Wicker's Farm or something like that. So maybe we just leave it, and like you said, we case by case basis and determine if it's an appropriate location or not. Anybody ever, any other comment about it?
Yeah, because I thought I brought something up about that before, and basically, the way I read it, it was, it was small independent commercial, and then I thought, well, it's ruling out big, large chains. But then, basically, if you really read it, it's, it's just including, that will be included, so it's not ruling anything out. It's just in addition, which doesn't hurt.
Yeah, okay.
Right, at proper locations, we can encourage it.
Okay, all right, good.
Again, to preserve the rural character of the community.
Absolutely, no, I completely agree, and that's where it makes the most sense, down there in that part of town. Just wanted to try and make sure that we weren't going to be allowing them to, well, like I said, we can just, we can look at those on a case by case basis.
And we have to look at parts of those, and that southern gateway, which on the map where I have it in the corridor, basically, a lot of that land is already spoken for and developments have already been approved, so.
My only concern on that wording, and this may not be the place, it may be in the zoning, is that we've got, you know, small estate basically all right in there, and then you got the EDC. There should be some on those western properties, some kind of buffering, whether it be through landscaping or setback or whatever, you know, so I don't know where that wording should go.
No, we already have that notation, I have a note here about buffer, and if I've got a note here, then I've made some additional changes that talk about buffering.
One more, back to page three, Charles, on the very first available sentence there, "Process to delineate issues of concern or to determine if there is a requirement for a special plan," do you mean specific plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Second line, fourth word over.
Specific plan.
What page was that on? Three?
The top of page three, second line, fourth word over.
You've got a different document here, it's going to be in section 9.28, that's year 20.
9.28 dash what?
Come back one more. Okay, all right, so anybody got questions or concerns on page six?
You were done with five?
I thought we finished five, is that what you said? Oh, I'm sorry, we were on two, I apologize.
No, we were, we were on, we had C and D of page five, and you were on paragraph two of five. You hadn't discussed anything from that point below.
Okay.
You already got the wording in there about, oh no, that's something else, sorry, go ahead.
I just have on number four. I just had a, is that a same as a workshop?
Yes.
When you require a presentation? Do we, that's the word we've been using, is that the word we want to use in there?
If you would like it to be defined as that.
I don't know, I just, that was a question.
It would be a workshop. It would be a back and forth discussion, so we could put in the word workshop.
I agree.
Yeah, because I thought we discussed that last time, and we left it as may require, not shall require, because there was some discussion about.
I think I said shall, yeah.
But as the community development director pointed out, it, leaving it this way is probably the best course.
Yep, we can put in language of added workshop.
Okay. Other concerns there?
Nope, I just like that it's open, that makes sure it says it's open to the public, like that.
And in number six, the last sentence there, "The applicant or successor must have a continuing or controlling interest in the development or management of uses within the EDC." I wasn't really sure what you meant by that. It must be also be initiated by the original applicant, the applicant or successor must have controlling. Continuing or controlling interest in the EDC. I apologize, I don't, I didn't write a note down there, but I did circle it for some reason.
I know, and don't apologize, because when you look at this two weeks, three weeks before, and you make little notes, it's.
Okay, you want to, that language is in there, because you don't want somebody that owns one tenth of the specific plan to have the opportunity to change the entire specific plan, you want the majority property owner to have that control.
Okay, all right. A little extra clarity there.
And if, wouldn't it also be if someone comes and we approve something, and then, once it's approved, they sell it to someone else, and then they want to change it, that they're stuck with what was approved?
Right, they're stuck with what's approved unless they're majority property owner, and then they could ask for another. If you, if, if a property owner wants something to be considered, and they make the application, and they qualify for this paragraph, then they sell the property to somebody else for whatever reasons, and then that new owner chooses to ask for another amendment. If they submit the proper paperwork and pay the appropriate fees, it'll go through the process of commission and council, and you and they, the council, will have the opportunity to make a decision on it. It doesn't lock it in stone, it just, it's a mechanism by which you have more assurance that it's the majority of the property that's involved in the approval as opposed to, again, somebody that's got 10 percent that wants something for just their particular parcel.
I think it's good language to have in there, thank you for putting that in there.
I apologize to the commission, I'm going to go backwards again. Mr. Leclerc, on page three, you had a comment, I don't know if it's you, for McCall Boulevard, you added in there, "The economic driver theme includes a mixed, a mix of office, medical, residential areas which would be compatible with the regional medical center on, on East McCall Boulevard." I like that language for E as well. And I'll basically discuss what I'm talking about there, you know, I thought about adding a sentence, "Should include the potential for economic driver themes and include a mix of industrial and professional business parks that complement the adjacent medical uses to the south in Marietta." I want to make sure that we're not designing it a vacuum, and that we can, you know, maybe foster a relationship with that medical facility that's on the south end of town, south of us in Marietta, as well as the Kaiser property that they just bought across the freeway. I can envision a medical business, medical slash business park being developed in the south end of town, and.
Wouldn't that go in the SG section, not Newport Road?
Yeah, right, E, section E.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good idea.
Are you asking for this language or the language you read? Well, changing this language, but.
Well, adding, I think he's talking about adding.
Yeah, yeah, adding language to it, that says.
That encourages the medical theme.
It encourages, yeah, "A mix of industrial and professional business park that complement the adjacent medical uses to the south in Marietta."
And that's adding to E?
Correct.
That's a good idea.
Not a problem.
Because I think we got to, you know, really think long term here, and the word on the street is that Marietta is going to be building out Keller Road, and, you know, Kaiser, Kaiser bought that property at Keller and Antelope. It's likely to say that that's going to develop into a lot of medical uses over there, and we should definitely be able to piggyback on some of that. All right, sorry, no, we're backwards.
Which that always makes me mad, that should be Menifee. Should be Menifee, that was.
Right? It used to be.
Yeah, I know.
Anything on page six, anybody? All right, we can jump into the table. The permitted and conditional uses in the different areas. Mr. Leclerc, you, when you went through, just generally, on these, on these tables, did, do some of these have overriding requirements from other agencies that bind us by having them either be permitted or conditionally used permitted, or conditionally permitted?
No.
So we have discretion to pick and choose which one of these in these categories are allowed or not allowed?
Outside agencies would have contributing requirements, but not decisions as to whether a use is permitted or not, and under what review process.
Okay. For the alcohol in the Newport Road section, I remember when CVS came in, we had to make a finding of public necessity. Is it safe to say that we won't need to make a finding of public necessity for all these, you know, conditionally use or conditional and permitted uses in that area, again, or?
No, you're, the requirement under ABC, Alcohol and Beverage Control, to make a, a finding, a determination of, of public convenience, necess, public necessity and convenience is totally separate from your land use decision. The standard by which the state has established, the threshold by which a census tract is considered over-concentrated with facilities that sell alcohol is based upon the population within that census tract. And depending on the ratio of overall in the region or the state, I forget which it is, that set, that number, that determines whether or not you've got an over-concentration. So that doesn't tie directly to this, it's something you have to deal with, but it doesn't tie directly to whether it's a conditional use permit, or whether it's a, something permitted by right. You could have a use of the sale of alcohol as permitted by right, and still have to go through the steps to make a determination of necessity and convenience.
Do we have a map of the census tract for that area? The only thing I'm getting at is, I'm just concerned that that area is already built out to, for the most part. There's, there's the potential for some more density to be put in the area if, for some reason it ever happened, but I'm just, I'm just thinking that it's, it's never even going to be possible. And if we say permitted, conditionally permitted, we start giving people the impression that the uses are allowed, and by virtue they're not.
But they would be allowed, if you, even if you've got the area built out, and someone comes in and has a bar by right, it's not suggested, but has a bar by right. They may, and they replaced three shoe shops, combined it and made a bar out of it. They would still, if it's an area of over-concentration as defined by ABC, have to come to the city for the letter of public convenience, necessity and convenience, or convenience and necessity. What staff will ultimately recommend to the city council, the state law gives the opportunity for that deciding body to authorize someone else, the commission or staff, to make the determination, and you can set up guidelines, I did this in Twenty-Nine Palms, where you set up guidelines, and the community development director, if the, the new alcohol license is within a, an area of over-concentration but meets these three, four, however many criteria, then staff is authorized, the city council authorizes staff to sign and send off that letter of public convenience and necessity. And you can do that, same kind of a situation in this community, and I'm going to suggest that ultimately to the city council, because it's kind of silly to, if there's a question, then the standards can be set up so that it can go to the city council. If there isn't a question, if it's in an area where it's reasonable to expect that your core area will have lots of commercial activities and, but few residential activities, and you're going to end up virtually always over-concentrated, because that's where your restaurants are going to be, and your bars are going to be, and, and your sales, your liquor stores, and so forth. So if they're going into a facility that it's completely reasonable, and you would rather have it there than four blocks away in a neighborhood, that it may not be over-concentrated, then you should be able to encourage it to be there by having a simple mechanism to allow it to be there.
But isn't the ABC rules or guidelines a starting place? And aren't we, we as a city can make other standards to go along with that, that's what, I've talked to ABC, and that's the, that's the information I received, that we can, we can, like some of the other cities, Rancho Cucamonga, there's an, there's a, there's another one, that they've really come down with some really good city, the city, the city council had some really good standards.
You can put in your development code, standards that are applicable to the sale of alcohol, that's not a problem. You can tie those to the criteria that relate to the same issues as the ABC. What my response of no was, you can't change the concept of what that threshold is. The state has set that threshold and the mechanism by which it's calculated, and you can make a determination as to whether or not it's acceptable to go over that threshold or not to go over that threshold.
But am I, I'm not sure if I'm understanding you correctly, because I, when I talked with them at ABC, actually, a person I talked to there said, "We're hoping the city of Menifee has a little bit strong, stronger, a little bit, stronger standards than."
Stringer requirements.
Yes, yes, and they, they were like, "These are just, these are just the basics to go by."
And again, yes, you can set in your development code, standards as say that you can't be located within, you know, a mile of, or a structure with a flat roof, if you want to. You can say that it can't, that they can't have sales past 10 o'clock at night and earlier than, than 10 o'clock in the morning. You can put a variety of standards on, as long as you can point to a justification for them, yes. But again, my response before was relative to that threshold, that number, and how it's arrived at relative to what the chair was speaking about as to where the typical over-concentrations take place that trigger the need to talk about the, the overriding consideration.
And what part of the development code will we be discussing that?
Well, there is no particular restrictions in this chapter that deal with that issue. If you would like those kind of things in this chapter, you simply tell staff and we find the spot.
Is this in another chapter, or we have to create another chapter?
I have not put it in any of the, the chapters that would put the kind of limitations I just spoke of.
I would agree with that.
Because that was something I wanted to look more into, and I haven't yet, and I'd like to be prepared to, to do my homework and to look into what a couple other cities have done. And that, I understand, from the police department, was a very positive move in those cities. So I'd just like to know when that's going to come up, that maybe we can discuss that a little bit more in detail.
I like the idea of putting that in its own section.
I'm not so concerned about restaurants selling beer, because that's, there's no way you're going to really stop it. It's the off-site consumption locations that, yeah, so.
All right.
I was just going to ask why the off-site consumption would concern you more.
Because if you look at cities statistically, the higher concentration of off-site consumption stores, i.e. liquor stores, they have much higher concentrations of crime, vandalism, and other related crimes. And there's, I remember Newport Beach, they had a strip, I can't remember what the main drag is, they had so many liquor stores, and the planning commission, I had a friend who was on it, this is when I was younger, they made a concerted effort to drive them out and limit the numbers, and it greatly reduced the crime, many other things, so. Nothing wrong with having a liquor store, but do we want a high concentration of them? No, we don't need them and the crime associated with it.
Because I don't really see a lot more crime associated than anything else, but the way I would look at it is, say, on the gateway streets that we have that come in and go out, that basically access the freeway and go to other communities, say, Paris, Winchester, Marietta, Wildomar, those are the places where you probably want it, because if people are coming home from work or going somewhere, they'll stop in in Menifee, spend their money in Menifee, we get the tax revenue, they'll take it home and drink it in Wildomar, they'll take it home to Elsinore, that's what I'm, that's what I want to see.
Well, and, and just, as, and when I was asking my questions, you know, we can, we can stiffen the radius a little bit towards where there's schools, preschools, churches, you know? And so that's, you know, I'm just looking, I'm thinking about some of the situations we have here that have happened that are crazy, why there's a bar next to a church, and why there's a liquor store next to a neighborhood off of McCall. So that is just, you know, I'm just thinking about those things that have happened, that I've heard from people here who are not happy with, with those things that have happened, and I just want to know when we should talk about that and bring that up, so. I don't want to get off our subject, what we're on right now.
No, it is perfectly fine to put it there, you can always do, in that table, as we've done in many of the tables, a little footnote, and you reference to, as Commissioner Phillips had commented.
I'd like to come back and look at that then, and maybe I can do a little homework and come prepared.
Okay, if you would provide it to staff, then we will, we'll get it to the full commission.
That what?
Provide it to staff, and then we will, we can chat about it, and then we can get it to the full commission.
Yeah, definitely, and maybe I may even need some staff help.
Oh, not a problem.
Okay, any other changes on page seven in the, in the table? The only thing that I thought to change, and I'll obviously ask the rest of the commission what they feel, is on the automotive services and repairs, the highlighted portion, their incidental screened outdoor storage is allowed, I thought about saying it's not allowed within the community core area, because that's where we envision our downtown to be, do we want to limit?
We do not want any automotive repair.
Do we want to limit, well, the, the use itself, but in, in the, in the note section, the screened outdoor storage, I would say would be prohibited in CC.
You know what, I'm actually have that one circled right here as well.
So the suggestion is to incidental screened outdoor storage is allowed except in CC.
That's what I was thinking.
Is the hub considered part of the CC, community core?
No.
It's not, because it has a specific plan?
Yes, and it's outside the purple on the map.
Okay, that's right, okay.
Does everybody agree? Just something I thought of.
And don't forget, you will get a copy of the changes presented to you and, for your public hearing, and you will have the opportunity, again, to go through and hit areas that you've either had additional thoughts about or where I simply misunderstood and/or did not put it down correctly.
I see one interesting, maybe it's a conflict, maybe not. If you look on what we're just talking about, the automotive services repairs, and you have parentheses, tune-ups, emission test brakes, upholstery, electrical, and that's in the, in the core, it's a C, conditional use permit. But if you look down on body, down below use, body, paint, and upholstery, it has a star under CC, which means it's not permitted. So are those the same thing?
Good call. Upholstery, you got upholstery twice.
I personally.
I don't have upholstery in mind.
I don't either.
I don't either.
Am I looking at an older version?
I doubt it.
Page seven?
Page seven.
Page eight.
So paging the second one in, you got body, paint, upholstery shops?
Yeah, I guess I have my older version here, so.
Because we have like three versions. Oh, I think he is on the older version.
Yeah.
I'm on, I don't know.
Oh.
Yeah, this is.
Gotcha.
My, my thing is, I could see why you had automotive service repairs, that's kind of like light, that's like your, like your, you know, grease monkey and stuff like that. But do we, I don't think we want them doing upholstery and radiators and all that in the.
Community core.
In the community core, I would, I don't know how we could word it, but I.
No, you just strike, you now change that, body and paint, and it's prohibited there.
But it's not there.
Right, but upholstery is allowed under the previous one, under a conditional use permit.
Yeah, I don't think in the community core, I could see, like I say.
Right, that's what he's saying.
Your oil change shops, maybe, things like that.
It's allowed over here.
So you want it to be prohibited?
I want it to be prohibited in the community core, yes.
So you want body and paint, so you want to strike upholstery from the previous one?
Yes, from up here.
Okay.
I mean, because you have, you know, it's how down below you've got the engine transmission repair rebuild, that's more intensive, and that's prohibited in the core.
Okay, I get it.
Which, that's not really the purpose of the core.
As long as the rest of the commission understands that you're striking the one word on page seven.
Upholstery.
Upholstery.
Upholstery, radiator, electrical, I mean.
No, no, just the upholstery.
Just the upholstery.
Just the upholstery.
That's all I understood you to be suggesting.
I'm suggesting even more, and that in the core, kind of like Matt was saying, do we really want
Heavy duty.
Heavy duty mechanical work there, when that's really more going to be, you know, retail and dining.
What we're putting in, we've got this other thing that's under consideration of putting in a paint shop over there.
But it's not, that's what I was asking, it's not, which it should be considered, because it's not like to like, but.
Okay, so are you suggesting, I don't suggest electrical, because electrical is relatively.
That's true, that's.
But the upholstery and radiator.
Radiators, yeah. The rest of it could be done in a America's Tire Shop, kind of a thing, yeah.
But even all these would be done inside, so I really don't see what the point is.
Because when you start getting upholstery, you're getting other repairs, and they end up flowing outside. If you've seen any kind of intense auto repair, they're, they're always working in the parking lot. If you've seen any kind of intense uh auto repair, they're they're always working in the parking lot.
Well, I'm I'm aware of a house up there now that's doing that in their front yard, in that area.
Well, that's, that's, that's an enforcement issue though. I mean, we can allow it and and if it's not, they're not meeting their conditions, we can force them.
Are we taking out upholstery?
Upholstery and radiators, again, just for the core. And it's, again, it comes down to a vision of what do you see being built there.
So the rest of those uses are allowed in the core under conditional use permit since they are not, uh, but on the next page, body, paint, and upholstery shops, it's specifically prohibited uh in the core.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't want to add radiator to that as.
I was going to cut out upholstery and radiator, yeah, because it's.
But I'm looking, you know, thinking from automotive services, if somebody was doing it, having, a shop was doing tune-ups, they were doing emission tests, they were doing brakes, tires, batteries, they would do radiators too. Why would you want to?
But that is something where you're using the the fluids and and other things that are more intensive than if you were uh doing an electronic test of the the tailpipe. If you were doing brakes uh that are just the pads and you take the wheels off and you do that. Where you're using upholstery, what you were talking about, and where you're using radiators, you're doing much more physical work to that.
Well, it's messy too. You ever been in a radiator shop?
Nope.
It's black, they're all black inside.
Okay, okay, all right.
They're nasty.
Funny you should say that.
Okay.
They're gross, it's like a tranny shop.
So take those off, strike them.
Um, again, though, were you considering adding the word radiator into um the second line of the the page eight?
For redundancy?
Yes.
No, because you struck it from the other, so it's now not listed.
Oh, it's not listed at all.
And therefore is prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 right.
Yes.
So are you putting that under use?
Yeah.
The second one on page eight.
Body, paint, radiator, and upholstery shops. Permitted, conditional, prohibited, conditional, conditional.
So this is a.
Nope.
Case radiator. Oh, okay.
Would radiator be more fitting under automotive repairs major?
Mm-hmm.
Just add it there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect.
Where's that?
It's the next one down.
Major? Oh, right there, okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Good catch.
Good call, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
So your paycheck won't bounce this week.
Okay, um.
Well, I have a question then on the next one, boat sales right above the paint body. Boat sales, new and used, there's an asterisk for the north gateway.
Mm-hmm.
But don't we have Richardson RV already there?
It's not in the EDC.
Oh.
Get get out your EDC map over there.
I guess why, why would boat sales be prohibited up there?
We're talking about just, just along Ethanac Road right there.
I think that's kind of appropriate use for up there, isn't it?
Um, it's.
This is.
Way north.
The logic behind it was.
On McCall.
North, north.
That it uses up a lot of space that could be better served since this is your limited industrial area. Instead of using it, yes, it's a, it's not aesthetically terribly pleasing, but it uses up a lot of land for very little return. And so when you've got a limited industrial area, that's what we were trying to accomplish.
Okay.
But it's, again, it's a suggestion, it's staff's suggestion to you.
Well, why would you not want it just in the north and then allow it in the, some of those other down in the south?
Again, for the logic that that it's a low intensity use that has little return relative to the value of industrial land that is limited in other parts of the city.
Because boat sales can be done on a lot of different commercial properties, not necessarily just EDC.
Right, so would you, you what, you would allow it in the rest then?
Yeah, that's conditionally allowed in all the rest.
Do you want it allowed in all the rest?
Well, then where would we put it?
I mean, do you want it in the community core? I don't, I don't want an RV in the community core.
RV, aren't RV sales?
Yeah. Boat sales, new and used?
That's boat.
Was it another boat? Would you want that boat sales in the core? I'm just seeing what we're envisaging, envisioning in the core.
Not a whole, a lot of whole land left there either.
Well, I I think, you know, we need to look at, you know, the freeway fringe right there. And, you know, the opportunities for boat sales, if it was going to happen in Menifee, would be along the freeway, along the community core.
Along with auto sales, yeah.
Makes the most sense right there.
Okay.
Well, this is community core right here, right?
That's, that's McCall Boulevard.
That's McCall's.
Yeah, community course like this.
That part right there, yeah.
And then this is the southern gateway.
Okay.
Speaking of which, what are the chances of us getting any auto sales here being proximity to Paris and to Temecula and Marietta? Will we ever have a car dealership?
We've had a couple of discussions with individuals that are, uh, that would like to seek um auto sales facilities. The difficulty is that most uh brand name companies have uh radii by which they won't locate a another facility. So if you've got all those uses in Temecula, all those uses in uh other communities nearby that would overlap these areas for that ten mile radius, it limits which dealerships are available to go in. And you want a couple of name brand dealerships to make a a center work. And you certainly don't want to go with only used car because there are inherent issues with the aesthetics of used cars facilities. They're often very difficult to police.
Maybe we could get a Tesla.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd get one of those down here, that'd work.
I'd like to look at gas station with um with or without a mini mart. It seems like we have a lot of those coming up. Do do we um want to look at over concentrated areas of some of those and asterisk any of those in the core?
Where's the, do we have?
It's right under your car wash, it's highlighted.
I don't know, there's a significant amount of revenue being derived from a mini mart, you know.
Gas tanks.
Rather than just have gas, I mean, these, yeah, so.
But this is with or without the mini mart.
Right.
The issue is the gas station and whether or not you feel it's appropriate to to allow under a conditional use permit, individual review uh anywhere within any of the five districts. It's a conditional use permit, if you find that it's inappropriate for certain locations, for whatever the the reasons would be, you can deny the conditional use permit.
Okay, okay, all right.
Um, I wanted to ask about the um motor vehicle trailer and boat storage. You have it uh conditionally and permitted indoors only and nothing outdoor. I know the, I know the cost breakdown between building a building just for RV storage and being able to keep them outside. Obviously, it's aesthetically an eyesore to have a conglomeration of different vehicles stored outside. Would the commission be willing to make an exception in any one area for anybody to have it allowed outdoors? Because of the, simply because of this, because if the only place we allow vehicles and and trailers and RVs to be stored is indoors, that means that everybody in Menifee that has a boat, trailer, RV is going to be paying a higher price for their storage compared to putting their vehicle somewhere else. And we have a lot of smaller lots now where you can't store RVs and boats and things like that.
But there's four of them that you can with a conditional use permit.
No, indoors.
It's indoor.
The problem with.
Outdoor is not allowed at all. So outdoor allows you to have an area that might be a little bit cheaper for your storage.
But do we want that in the, in the?
See, we already have one there right now, the one, the the white one, All American Storage or whatever it is, it's right here.
No, I'm, no, this is motor vehicle, trailer, and boat storage.
Yeah, yeah, there's a storage place that that they, that they have a component, you can store your.
Outdoors?
Outdoors.
Okay.
So the, I've always had a problem with that because that, there's very little sales tax revenue comes from that.
Sure.
So I think you're right, we should have those outdoor units, it just shouldn't be in the EDC.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, not in the EDC.
Places where they could put it.
Is it allowed anywhere else?
You can make it allowed other places when you get to those chapters that have the commercial and and industrial area.
I would agree with your concept.
I would agree with that too, that, okay, that makes sense. So so can you make a note for the future when we get to those sections to make sure that we're talking about, you know, the out, the capability of outdoor storage for boats and RVs and things like that?
But that's not really what it says, is it?
What's that?
Just like under motorcycle sales and service, motorcycle sales service, the service has to be done within a building, but the sales can be done outside, it doesn't say that. So if you're servicing boaters, whatever, it's indoors, but you can still store it indoor or outdoor.
No, it's not out, you think you're, you're, the 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 shift is just off. I think the at, the indoor only is these lines, outdoor is prohibited everywhere.
Right.
It's just not, they're not on the same line.
It's just bumped, yeah, it's bumped down, there, some.
I got a typo.
Yeah, it's just off a little bit.
Yeah, it it's rather hard in some of these boxes to get them to line up, right?
I was having a hard time understanding that and I figured it out.
Okay, good, good point, Chris, thanks. I ju- I just want to make sure that we weren't, you know, pigeonholing everybody in Menifee to have to pay a higher price for storage.
Are we striking that out?
Uh, no, because outdoors prohibited still in EDC, but his indoors, you know, they got that uh that eliminator boat storage up on the two fifteen. I wonder how much that is, have you looked at the prices on it?
It's like twenty-five bucks a foot.
And what's an outdoor usually?
Ten.
Oh, okay. So so Matt's not going to be storing his boat up there anytime soon then?
No, no, and I'll, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, it sounds, it it sounds soul-serving, but I know that there are a lot of people that have those RVs. You know, for for my boat and RV, I pay an extra a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month for storage because I can't keep it on my property.
Can't keep it on, you don't want them sitting on the driveways.
Right. So, you know, and I'm not going to leave it sitting on my street where it detracts from my neighborhood, but it's an additional cost that you have to factor in when you buy toys.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for being responsible.
Okay, uh, any other comments on page eight? Okay. Page nine? Uh, I had. Go ahead.
I have a question on page nine, adult oriented business.
Uh-huh.
Says see chapter nine point one one two. We don't have that to look at, do we?
You will eventually, but not right at the moment.
Okay.
And th- those are relatively restricted as well.
Okay, okay.
It's going to be um, it will be a very restrictive code.
Uh, bumping up one line there, I had, I had questions on the wine, beer, and liquor tasting establishments and their allowances in the northern and southern gateways. I envisioned those areas having the potential for having breweries.
Correct.
Um, later on in here, it talks about the consumption being an ancillary use by a certain percentage, a certain ratio, the flow rate ratio.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do we want to just say that they're permitted in those areas or or? It seems like we're we're doubling up on on restrictions there if it's already regulated somewhere else.
This is oriented towards an establishment that that is its primary function as opposed to a brewery which brews and then has a tasting room, like what we're going to have next door.
Okay.
Question, are you done with that one?
Yeah, good, thanks.
Um, why is a coffee house, why is it prohibited in a coffee house but a conditional with entertainment? Live entertainment, am I reading that wrong?
Live entertainment's conditional everywhere, coffee houses are permitted.
Oh, permitted instead of prohibited, I, oh, permitted, okay.
Right.
Stop, the star is prohibited.
That's right, I was mixing that up, okay.
And that's why.
I had a question on the motocross facility.
Mm-hmm.
Is there indoor motor, is this um, wait a minute, there's two bicycle BMX.
Right. And off-road minibike.
Do we want those in the economic development corridors? There's, I mean, some aren't, but some, there's, trying to read how this is, the minibike courses.
In in the heavier areas, the northern gateway and the southern gateway, just offering this as a possible use under a conditional use permit, under individual review. If the commission doesn't feel that those would be appropriate in those areas, we simply change it from conditional to prohibited.
Yeah, against the freeway. Yeah, against the freeway, I I just.
Well, where are you going to get these BMX courses if it's indoor? It's going to be in a tilt-up commercial building. So, and they're going to be paying rent and selling stuff inside, so.
I'm I'm confused as to where you're getting the the term indoor for this.
You know what, I got, we got, I think we got the term indoor from the top one, batting cages, I think.
Yeah, no, there is no indoor, yeah.
It's not indoor.
BMX courses usually outdoors.
Right.
Just because of the tractors and everything, it's it's required to move the dirt and they're on dirt.
I guess I've, yeah, I used to race them out once, but I've seen a couple in Orange County insides now, so, but I guess it's, they're probably not going to do it out here.
Well, but they could, they could have indoor or outdoor on either of these. But the activity level, the noises, the other associated impacts, although somewhat different, still, I'm giving you the opportunity to allow them under a conditional use permit, or if you don't.
Would that be like, like in Orange County, how they have that?
Go-kart racing inside, yeah.
Yeah, the go-kart racing, it's along the freeway, you see it, is this?
That's the same kind of thing, yes, and you have.
Do you want to put an indoor provision on that?
I don't know, is it a good thing or is it not, I mean, it looks fun.
Yeah, but then you're going to end up with a lot of other stuff like emissions.
Right.
You know, indoor emissions and stuff like that.
So if we didn't allow it in the ECD, where would we allow it then?
You know, the commercial or heavier use areas.
Okay.
Other industrial areas.
So are we going to strike that then, say not permitted, or provide it conditional use?
I'm still suggesting at least for the northern corridor, which is your industrial area, that that would be at least reasonable to have that. But the opposite argument that I used before of your limited land area for such uses also comes into play.
Well, I don't think.
And the tax revenue that we we be generating from a BMX course is probably not that.
Relatively small.
And I don't think Newport Road would be appropriate for definitely the bicycle BMX course. And we've got Newport Road with a conditional use permit. I'd like to strike that one, definitely.
I don't, yeah, it doesn't, it, I don't think it would ever happen.
Okay, so please repeat for me which one you want to strike?
Definitely the Newport Road ECD.
The condition, the conditionally used for Newport Road.
For the bicycle BMX course.
Okay.
Now I'm going to play devil's advocate, it is good to have those BMX courses.
Oh, yeah.
To keep kids out of trouble.
Right, I I'm thinking of fans, but not a Newport Road.
Okay.
I, do you?
Get me out of trouble. And even further, I mean, like, like we said before, not in the EDC where we're trying to.
Right, not in the EDC.
You know?
Well, then, do we want to do it for the south gate, south?
Yeah, let's do it for the south gate and take.
Oh, it can go up north.
I would agree with the southern gateway, that's that's envisioned to be a business park, so.
So the northern gateway under conditional use permit is the only place where it's permitted in the EDC?
In the EDC.
Yes.
No, um, nevermind.
Ju- jumping back up, on on a few of these here, you have CUP required to serve alcohol. I had considered adding CUP for alcohol on the amusement park slash simulated flying racing track or slick track. Those those types of places usually serve beer.
Yeah.
Say that again?
The amusement park line item. Adding a note in the note section, CUP required to serve alcohol.
Okay.
Because I'll tell you what, I definitely need a beer after listening to kids scream at Disneyland all day.
I don't.
Um, on the motocross facilities, you you only talk about off-road minibike courses and and the bicycle BMX. What about, we don't talk about full-size motorcycles anywhere. Or do we want to add that to that section?
Well, and I was wondering in that section too, did I miss Paintball? And would that be?
No, it's in, uh, I saw it. Where'd it go?
Thought I did have Paintball in there because by recent.
It was in simulated shooting games. It was here.
Yeah, here it is, here.
Right.
Which section is it under?
Uh, simulated shooting games.
Okay, so it is under, okay, well, when we get there.
Uh, back to what you were saying before.
Full-size motorcycle track? You only talk about BMX and off-road minibike course?
Mm-hmm.
Where would you put a full-size motorcycle?
I don't know, but we don't, we don't talk about it anywhere, it's left out of here altogether.
So it's not listed.
So we either need to add a separate line item.
No, if uses not listed are prohibited.
Okay.
Um, we can list it if you want to make it expressly prohibited.
I just want to make sure we're getting everything.
I, to be honest with you, I did not consider that particular, so it's up to as to whether you include it or not include it.
Would that take into consideration like if someone has a house along the freeway and they build their own BMX motorcycle ramps in their backyard that they own?
That's not legal, except till the noise comes in, then you, right?
Okay, because that's, that's. Because that's, that's a situation.
A couple of those in Marietta, John.
Well, oh, is it down in Marietta now? Okay, so it's not Menifee, okay.
There are ways to address that issue because you're often dealing with grading and noise and dust and, and, um, the size of the property and a variety of issues. This, this was more of an issue in Twenty-Nine Palms where it's not unusual to have five and ten acres of desert land. Uh, there are environmental issues that have to be addressed. There are pollution issues that have to be addressed from the, the maintenance of the motorcycles. There's grading issues that have to be taken into consideration for making, uh, this. There are considerations for, uh, driving on unpaved surfaces uh, on, uh, certain properties and so forth. So there are a variety of ways of addressing that, uh, whether the city chooses to ignore it or say it's not permitted and here's your sixteen reasons as to why you're not in conformance with, uh, code requirements.
Okay.
Also got emergency services. I had a friend that got busted up on a dirt track.
All right, do we want to, are there any other corrections on page nine?
Do we want to look at in the go-kart tracks? With, because those are kind of similar to BMX. Do we want to look at that? I had a question mark next to them.
What's your question?
Just, um, do we want those, I mean, I'm looking along Newport Road, do we want a go-kart track indoors or outdoors? Um, I don't know. I, in the corridor?
Those are often smaller recreational things that you can have in larger buildings and so forth and/or part of, uh, an amusement facility in the area. So if you've got an amusement park, um, as an acceptable or a conditional use, then I felt it was appropriate to allow for. Because often they don't stand alone. They often have other things that go with them.
Like the miniature golf and all that. Those are revenue generators.
Right, but I see along Newport Road where, I mean, I'm looking at the east end, it's mostly houses. And then we're at grocery store and you come along, it's the main corridor, and then we go on outside of Murphy Ranch.
They would still be subject to noise limitations as set up in the code and the, and the noise, in the chapter that was just adopted by the council.
Well, I guess, I guess they have the new electric ones too that are pretty, pretty good.
Again, we also have to balance this against the comments that we've heard repeatedly in regards to not having anything for the youth to do in the core of the community.
I agree, but I was just looking along the Newport Road corridor. Um, that's one of our main real affairs, so. Just thought, I'm okay either way then.
Do you want to stop at the end of this page?
That makes sense. Anybody else have any comments on page nine? All right. We'll, uh, we'll adjourn and come back at, uh, seven for our planning commission meeting. All right, we'll call the, uh, the regular meeting of the planning commission to order. Adam Clark, you take role, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Phillips.
Resident.
Commissioner Sobek.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Metalco.
Here.
Chair Leesmeier.
Here. And would you all please rise for the flag salute? See your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Let's raise our hands to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Didn't hear you today, Grant. Any, uh, agenda modifications tonight?
No, sir.
All right. No additional presentations?
No, sir.
Anybody have speaker slips for public comment?
Yes, we do. Bonnie Brown.
Bonnie Brown.
Bonnie Brown?
Bonnie?
Hello, all you good people. Yeah, my name is Bonnie Brown. I've been a resident of Menifee since nineteen eighty. She's passing out in front of you the Solar Rights Act. Um, once you all get a copy of that, it's, I'm sure you're familiar with it. But, uh, I found out that Menifee does not address solar installations not mounted on rooftops. Solar panels mounted on solar rack panel currently falls under the accessory building permit category. This creates an unfair and cumbersome permit process to the applicant, resulting in many trips and unnecessary expenses due to the lack of classification of solar support racks. We, the people of Menifee, request that the planning commission enact an ordinance to classify these racks and therefore simplify and speed up the process. Any questions?
No, thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, you see the, uh, pictures? Does anybody see the pictures? Okay, those pictures, uh-huh. That's what I'm proposing to do on my business on the two fifteen and Scott Road. I have been asked by, um, Tamara at the counter that if I don't want to go through these arduous, uh, proceedings that I'm going through right now with them, that I could put up a hundred and twenty-foot, uh, square foot, which is ten by twelve, I think, carports. And I could put up many of those along, uh, the parking area where my clients park. That would look like a flea market or maybe a swap meet along that area, and then I wouldn't have to go through this process. She then, I just got a letter from them saying that I could do ground-mounted, um, solar in the parking lot where my clients park.
Then you won't have any parking.
Then I won't have any parking, and it's all gravel, about six inches of it, so, so, okay, that was the recommendation by them. So, I appreciate you listening to it. Any questions?
Where, where is your business on Scott?
South, south of, south of Scott Road, um, west side of the freeway, just south of the Tough Barns, Tough Shed?
Tough, it's, all these sheds. I'm Bonnie's here stopping day spa.
They have the name of the business painted on the walls?
Big stop sign?
That's correct. That's been there a long time. The business, the stop sign was painted and the wall was painted because when I had the white wall out there and Mapleton came in, I started getting hit with all the graffiti. And so I probably put about fifteen gallons of paint on the wall to paint over. And I had the wall painted one Saturday, totally painted. By Sunday after church, I came home and two graffiti, graffiti gangs had tagged the wall. So I called the guy from the county and he said, you need to call graffiti task force. I called graffiti task force. They came out and said, we'll paint the wall. I said, I don't need you to paint the wall. I need you to stop it. He said, you need to put a mural up here or a sign. This looks like a chalkboard to these people. So I spent months and my own paint and backbreaking and doing all that stuff to get that wall up there. And it has stopped the graffiti as well as provided us with a great way to get to the property since, uh, in, uh, when the freeway became a freeway, the, of course, the, uh, driveway was taken away from the doctor's office because that property was originally a podiatry office. So, once that was taken away, then the easement came in, it's hard to find that property. Once we put the business in there, I was building word of mouth until, uh, five years ago. The, the wall had been making for three years a, a, a really good thing. And so five years ago, I expanded into a day spa and that wall has, that wall is actually going to be the success of the business continuing. The business is successful, but that will continue. But it was, it was asked to me to be done by the county and the graffiti task force, so.
Thank you, Bonnie.
All right, you're welcome.
Katie Munir?
Really quick call on Katie. Mr. Leclerc, can you, can you keep an eye on this and, and maybe we can look at this later on when we get into the development code portion where we can address this, this solar issue?
Well.
Or can we pass a note to the city council to have us review this matter?
Right now, under state law, solar is allowed. What the, uh, individual was asking for was accessory structures that happen to have, uh, solar panels on them uh, be exempted from the requirements that any other accessory structure would be, uh, required to fulfill. You, in your review of the chapter dealing with accessory structures, can make that determination, and it is one of the chapters, a separate chapter, that you indeed could make that determination on.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Katie, go ahead. You have the floor.
Can my green light be started again?
It did. Yes.
Mr. Leesmeier, at the last meeting, I asked you to request the city order the documents pertaining to the dumping of sludge in Menifee. You stated you were looking at the forum that was held by the city, the meeting that had that. I'm here to tell you that forum was bogus. There were no experts and no accurate information presented. I was at that forum. At this time, I am demanding you to request those records. If you will not do that, right now, I am asking Vice Chairman Mark Metalco to request those documents. It is, as it's been stated by Kathy Bennett and City Attorney Biggs, that those records could not be destroyed by the county because they pertain to health and safety. That's pretty ironic. That's what I've been here five years trying to protect, is the health and safety of the people in this city. And I'm getting nowhere. I'm no farther now than I was five years ago. Next on my list, Ms. Sobek. I want to ask you if you had a conversation with Scott Mann about the accusations being made against him and if he stated they were true. I know the answer to that already, and now that you know, it needs to be made public. You have a moral obligation to make the truth known. Your entire church community should know the truth as well, as well as this whole city. Just like a three-year-old, he said he was sorry and would never do that again. Don't we hear that from little kids when they do something wrong? I'm sorry, I won't do it again. I'm sorry. Well, now we have the facts that he lied to get a loan against a house under fraudulent claims. He has lied about QVAC, I believe, being a nonprofit when it's not. Might want to check that out and see, but it's my understanding it's not. And he's been given money to them, city money, when it's not, I believe, a nonprofit. And Scott was instrumental in forming that committee. How many more lies has he told that have not come to light? Oh, yes, there is the claim that there is no proof sludge was dumped in Menifee when it has been documented in the press and other publications, and there is documentation to those claims. The public needs the truth and the whole truth. Then I'd like to ask, and I know tonight, Mr. Rob Johnson isn't here, our city manager. I'd like to ask why he's having lunch with Ms. Roxanne Thomas discussing city business. I think that if that's being done, it is wrong. Business should be conducted here at city hall, not out in some cafe. I think that should be investigated as well.
I have no further speakers on this item.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-fourth?
So moved.
Second?
I'm all in favor?
Aye.
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 See nothing on our consent calendar tonight. Puts us to item nine point one. The changes zone for the Menifee Lakes Plaza. Mr. Leclerc, you have a staff report for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, uh, Russell Brady will give the staff report on this.
Thank you, uh, Russell Brady presenting on behalf of staff, item number nine point one. Consistency of Menifee Lakes Plaza revision, uh, which includes plot plan number twenty fourteen, one, one, three, specific plan amendment twenty twelve dash one, one, five, and changes on twenty fourteen dash two, oh, six. Here showing the project location, uh, generally easterly of I two fifteen, norally of Newport and, uh, westerly of Antelope. The existing zoning on the site is specific plan number one fifty-eight, Menifee villages, plan area one dash one, which is designated, uh, commercial. Uh, surrounding zoning includes, uh, the same specific plan with, uh, one-family, two-family, and multifamily dwelling zoning to the north and east. Uh, south to commercial and to the west, specific plan, Newport hub, specific plan, uh, commercial designation. The site is currently vacant. Surrounding land uses include single-family residential to the east and north, commercial to the south, and, uh, commercial offices to the west beyond I two fifteen. The plot plan proposes a new plot plan which revises the previously approved Menifee Lakes Plaza, primarily to add an LA Fitness, uh, gym on the site. Uh, specifically, the changes to the site plan include the following. Eliminate pads two, three, four, and five and replace with, uh, thirty-four thousand five hundred square foot LA Fitness with an additional thirty-five hundred square foot mezzanine. Uh, revise references from pads to out parcels, modify parking field around the proposed LA Fitness, modify the driveway across from Balsa Road, modify the driveway between Balsa and Pompous, primarily removed, uh, the longer throat on the driveway. Uh, the majors, one, two, and three would all increase in size, uh, approximately between one thousand and two thousand square feet each. Uh, increased parking spaces provided from seven hundred and eighty-seven to eight hundred and fifty-four spaces. Uh, to note, eight hundred and eight parking spaces would be required, uh, with the, uh, proposed specific plan amendment with the new parking criteria. Uh, in total, the project, uh, proposes to increase total building square footage from one hundred and seventy-one, eight hundred and seventeen square feet to one hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and seventeen square feet. Uh, the specific plan amendment and changes zone propose to change the zoning ordinance text of the specific plan, uh, in particular for plan area one dash one that the project site is located within. Some, uh, certain portions that are supposed to be changed would allow for gym use with approval of a plot plan. Uh, modify the zoning ordinance to add and delete certain allowed uses for plan area one dash one only. Uh, the life of a conditional use permit would be extended from, uh, automatically from one year to five years. And for a plot plan, extended from two years to five years, uh, with no further extensions. Uh, modify parking area design standards, which we'll all highlight later. And modify the parking rate for general retail shopping centers from five point five spaces per thousand square feet of net leasable area to five spaces per thousand square feet. Uh, existing code at five point five spaces per thousand square feet would require eight hundred and eighty-two parking spaces, whereas the revised would require eight hundred and eight parking spaces as noted. Here showing the, uh, previous site plan, uh, as currently approved. Highlighted in orange there, the four pads proposed to be removed. And here showing the revised site plan, uh, as highlighted in orange there, the location of the LA Fitness. Uh, here showing the prior design, just to highlight, um, staff had noted the, uh, reduced throat length to the, um, driveway between Pompous and Balsa. Here showing that it's approximately a hundred and sixty feet, I believe it was, uh, distance on the throat. And here showing the revised plan, that it is, is a, is a reduced throat on the entry here. As shown here also that there is a median proposed on Antelope Road here, so there wouldn't be any left in. Uh, turning movements allowed for that, uh, driveway so that the traffic would all be right in, which would reduce the amount of traffic and thus the, uh, um, potential conflicts of a, of a shorter throat at this driveway. Also to note on the prior design, that there was on the secondary, uh, main drive aisle, uh, a continuous path connecting the, uh, easterly or southerly part of the site to the westerly part of the site in addition to these, uh, primary, uh, path along the majors. Uh, the revised design would, uh, would eliminate the direct, uh, flow of that drive aisle and would provide a more indirect path, uh, from, uh, vehicles either coming in at this driveway, the southerly driveway, or the secondary driveway, uh, across from Pompous to access the LA Fitness. As noted in the staff report, although these, uh, designs are not ideal, uh, they are, uh, adequate, uh, to provide for the adequate circulation on the site. As noted, currently the zoning code requires five point five spaces per thousand square feet. Uh, project proposes to modify that to five per one thousand. Uh, proposed requirements result in eight hundred and eight parking spaces compared to eight hundred and eighty-two under the existing. Uh, the project provides a total of eight hundred and fifty, uh, eight hundred and fifty-four parking spaces. Uh, there was a parking analysis provided for the project, uh, which indicates a maximum use of seven hundred and ten parking spaces needed to serve the project. Uh, this parking analysis looked at, uh, you know, hourly, uh, throughout the day, the amount of parking needed based on the individual uses anticipated, uh, on the site, as well as, you know, throughout the year. In other words, as yet to, to November, December, kind of peak shopping times with retail, how much, uh, parking is anticipated to be needed. Uh, despite the results or the conclusions of the parking analysis, staff is recommending, uh, a, a condition be added to ensure adequate parking is provided, uh, which would, uh, part of building permit issuance, uh, a parking analysis to be provided uh, when specific uses are proposed, so that when a particular tenant comes in, such as a restaurant, they would provide a parking analysis to indicate, uh, sufficient parking would be, uh, provided on the site.
Isn't that too late? You've already built a parking lot?
Well, it would, it would, uh, uh, require that the, the tenant now moving into the site or now being proposed within a particular building or space would prove it.
Okay.
Okay.
The parking design standards that are proposed to be modified would eliminate the requirement for bumpers, wheel stops, or similar devices for parking spaces with ends adjacent to walkways. Landscape areas or planters, except for parking designated for persons with disabilities. As well as modify the parking, or modify the requirement for end parking stalls adjacent to planters, requiring a six-inch curb and 12-inch concrete walkout to a six-inch curb and six-inch concrete walkout, or monolithic 12-inch curb. I'll show a picture of that, just to highlight. The applicant has indicated that the wheel stops present maintenance issues. Basically, the parking lot sweep and equipment wouldn't be able to access certain areas beyond the wheel stops, although these areas are fairly small. The applicant has also indicated the total 18-inch curb and walkout for installs is viewed to be excessive, and that a 12-inch total would be adequate. To note, these requirements for some existing shopping centers have not been applied. To note here, this is over at Newport Town Square, showing the total, as far as 18-inch monolithic curb that was built there, whereas the applicant is proposing would only have a 12-inch total.
What is, what is the reason for shrinking down that walkout?
Basically, that the 18 inches is overboard, that only 12 inches is really necessary, so that somebody getting out of the car would not step into the landscape planter.
Okay, go ahead.
Here showing the LA Fitness elevations for all four sides.
Can we go back to that 18-inch thing? Is that needed so they can get this number of stalls? Is that why they're doing it? Could change the parking stall count if we required 18-inch?
Not necessarily. It would more eat into the planter areas that are adjacent to the stalls.
It's basically like if you're, you know, if you're parking out in the field, the field, parking field, you're going to get out and step on asphalt on both sides. If you park up against a curb over here, without having that walkout, you're going to walk into a flowerbed, step in the mud, trip, fall, whatever.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just thinking, is the applicant asking for that so, because he needs it to have the required width on the stall and get another stall in?
It probably, I'll let Larry speak to it, but it probably helps tally up more landscaping area.
Oh, I see, okay.
Versus hardscape.
Again, showing the LA Fitness elevations. Of particular note, concern from staff was the rear of the tower element on the LA Fitness, which, without going back to the site plan, the rear of the building would generally face northwest, or generally up the freeway as you're coming south. I-215, you would see, you know, the back of the LA Fitness building here. So that was a concern of staff to make sure that, or desire to show the treatment of the back of the tower to make sure it is, have some treatment, that's not just kind of blank. As of now, it's generally just kind of a blank design. Here at the hotel, as previously designed, under the last extension of time, the planning commission approved last year, there was a condition included that the hotel be limited to a maximum height of 45 feet. In response to that condition, staff suggested that the hotel be, the hotel elevations be redesigned to be consistent with that condition. And so with that, the applicant has proposed revised elevations that essentially eliminated the roof element from the hotel and had a shorter roof element, with just a parapet, that would comply with a 45-foot height requirement. Staff did have some, you know, concerns on the overall design of this, and had requested, you know, some additional enhancements be provided to the hotel. However, discussing with the applicant, we've proposed a condition simply that the hotel come back as a minor plot plan application. For review by staff and the planning commission, once a certain hotel tenant is established, and that their architectural theme be provided for that.
So just to clarify, that other one with the gables and the roof tile was higher than the requirement that we asked for?
Yeah, that was, I believe, around 57 feet.
But it's not reducing the overall footprint, nor the number of rooms, nor the square footage, by lowering that, right?
Correct. And also just to highlight, these were the previous canopy elevations for the gas station, which we request the applicant incorporate some of the roof elements from the center into it. And also a conceptual of the corner monument presented, that some of the details we worked out later. So I apologize if this is a little fuzzy, but at least just shows kind of the general look of what the corner monument would be there at Antelope and Newport.
Do you know an overall length on that?
I'm not sure of the exact length of that.
Okay.
Some additional issues that staff looked at, were some of the onsite truck interning, accessing the loading areas. We did receive some exhibits from the applicant and their consultants showing these truck routes. However, there are some truck routes on the site that don't necessarily access the designated loading areas, in particular, the out parcel buildings. Due to that, staff would recommend a revision, as noted below, for condition eight, to revise the state if loading, to kind of follow, you know, starting approximately here. If loading is unable to occur in the designated loading areas, loading and/or unloading is allowed in front of out parcel buildings and the convenience store slash gas station, or within drive aisles during non-peak periods, basically in the morning until 10:30, or from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. That does not substantially interfere with vehicle circulation. Also to note, the applicant is anticipating to phase the project. There is a condition already on the project, that a phasing plan should be submitted if the project is to be phased. Since, as of now, I believe the LA Fitness and the gas station are some of the earlier portions anticipated to be developed for the project. Also to highlight the life of the plot plan, the original plot plan is nearing its expiration date, and so staff did suggest that this be considered as a new plot plan, which essentially restart the clock on the timeframe before expiration.
Well, if they're going to do that, are you, have you verified and carried forward any of the requirements that we had from their last meeting, to make sure every I is dotted and T crossed, that all those flow into this new plot plan? I don't want them to accidentally slip a change in there that we're not aware of.
No, we use the same conditions set as we did before and modified it as appropriate for the revision, and even just per new updated standards that we have for certain conditions, like landscaping and other things. But it is essentially still the same set of conditions as the original or previous from the extension of time.
Russell, I, see, I feel like something has been slipped in there, because we said 45 feet, three stories. We never, we said nothing larger than three stories.
No. Check the record, and it does not specify three stories. We discussed three stories, which our action, direction of staff, only limited it to the 45 feet.
I think the height's the biggest concern, not so much, I mean, if we had very small people and we could fit five stories in there, it doesn't really matter.
I remember a very good discussion that we're not a four-story city. I talked about doing my research down in Marietta and Temecula, all along the freeway. They have beautiful hotels that are three stories with beautiful roof lines. This square box, four stories. I know you said it would come back, but we just went through this on this side of the freeway, too, so.
I would agree with Mr. Leclerc. I don't think that the issue was the quantity of rooms, it was the height of the building. We decided, I think, as the consensus was to let the market dictate what product would be best fit there.
Correct. Again, I apologize, I don't, I don't mean to sound rude about it, but you did have an extensive discussion. You did provide, Commissioner Sobek did provide comments and illustrations from other communities, but in the end, at the end of the discussion, what staff took away from that was the preservation of the 45-foot height limitation, and that it would be the burden of the applicant in order to provide as best as they could for your future review in alternative design and structure.
What's up?
And so with that, staff recommends adoption of resolution number PC 14-184, recommending city council approval of the specific plan amendment, and adopt resolution number PC 14-185, recommending city council approval of the change zone, and adopt resolution number PC 14-183, recommending city council approval of the plot plan, and recommending city council adoption of an addendum to the environmental assessment mitigated negative declaration. This concludes staff's presentation, available for any questions the commission may have.
All right, thank you, Russell. Are there any questions specifically of the staff report, or the information in the report itself?
I have one. Everyone else can go first, though, if they have other questions.
I just want to ask if engineering's totally up to speed on this? You're happy with the driveways? You're happy with the access points, circulation, that sort of thing? I was concerned about that driveway at the hotel, how it's kind of split and forked around right there.
Yes, the traffic division has spent a lot of time with the applicant, the applicant's engineer, to thoroughly review the circulation, and we can answer specific questions.
Russ, can you pull up that driveway by the hotel? A little hard to see, but the movement there, it looks like you have one lane in, one lane out, but then as you... I'm just not sure what's going on there. I mean, obviously, the two lanes in, that's probably not such a problem, but it's the two lanes out that I'm concerned with. You got two cars trying to merge and trying to get into one right turn lane there. With no stacking, it just seems like a mess.
Yeah, let me turn this over to Rafael Martinez, Assistant Director of Public Works and City Traffic Engineer, who's worked in depth on this, and he can explain the circulation.
Yes, we actually requested the applicant to submit to us turning movement templates for truck movements, to make sure that if a truck movement can circulate the ingress egress of this driveway, then we'll know that any passenger vehicles are going to have no trouble maneuvering in and out of the area. And it does circulate throughout the entire shopping center. As well as, we did, there was a queuing analysis that was done for the entire shopping center, and that's why you have all the separate distributed driveways that distributes the volume throughout the entire shopping center. It's not concentrated on one location. So if there was a problem with this one driveway, if, there would be a problem with this one driveway if we had a reduced number of driveways. But with the number of driveways that we have at the various roadway locations, mixed with that one driveway in the middle, right in, right out, it distributes the volume. Therefore, the analysis showed that there wasn't going to be a queuing issue within this driveway at this location.
I guess my concern is, you know, you've got vehicles coming in from conceivably the oasis, right? They're going to be making a right turn into that driveway.
No, that's, that's not oasis.
If you're coming from the oasis, you're going to turn right into that driveway.
Yes.
You will turn right into that driveway, and you will have an option to go in that right double lane, or to go in that other lane, which I perceive this as being one-way traffic. So it would seem that we need to divide the traffic if we're, you know, if you've got two lanes going one-way, how do you prevent cars from choosing the left lane as you enter that center and coming on opposing traffic? Is that the intent, that you have the capability of going both directions?
You do have the capability of going both directions.
But not in the other lane?
Not in the other lane, exactly.
Maybe some signage right there?
It seems like a mess.
It can easily, it can easily be delineated, so that we can maneuver and reduce the confusion. But, yes, you are able to go to the right, and you are able to go to the left, so that you can have parking.
Is that a canopy right there? Is that a canopy? So that, because, so that's what, okay. So are you saying maybe take the canopy out and make that a true two-in, two-out?
Oh, because that's the carport for the hotel.
Aren't you going to get a lot of confused people going through the carport? Check again.
I didn't see that. Thanks, Chris. I thought that was, I thought that was like stamped concrete. Okay.
Yeah, that's a mess.
Without intensive signage, and maybe having the stamped concrete be to there, and then only the two-way road being pavement, kind of showing visually that way, I see a lot of confusion there.
I can see where there might be more confusion if this were the two primary driveways, but this is going to be a minimal-use location. The two primary ones are going to be the one off of Pompous and Palm Villa.
I actually completely disagree. You've got all the residents coming straight off of Balsa Road. They're going to use that driveway. They're going to go straight into that driveway.
That is true. They are going to be using the driveway, but the distribution that we have utilizing this location is coming from off of the freeway area, so coming from, coming from the south. So that's, that's the major distribution that's coming, that's going to be the usage for this location.
Is Balsa a light, or just a yield turn in?
It's a signal light.
It's a signal light at Balsa, a signal light at Pompous, Pompous, right? Okay. Is there a U-turn allowed at Balsa, coming, if you were heading north on Antelope? Is that an allowed U-turn, or no?
No, that will not be an allowed U-turn, no.
So you're going to have a lot of traffic coming through there? Because if they're not coming in Pompous, I see a lot of people off the freeway coming in off of Balsa, just to go to LA Fitness.
They, they could potentially go in through Balsa. We are showing the major distribution coming in through Pompous, but really, what we're talking about, it will be distributed. It is essentially wherever there is going to be least resistance, and if the calculations turn out correct, it is going to be a distributor coming in through Pompous, as well as through Balsa Road.
Yeah, if everyone's lazy, they'll come in the first drive off the freeway.
What's the rest of the commission think?
Right now, we're asking staff, so I was waiting for a discussion after we do the resident.
Any other questions of staff on the report? Go ahead.
I just wanted, with staff, I know I've brought this up before, and on section seven, page one, I like looking at that map of who you contacted. Now, this is a very good example, we should have contacted, a letter should have went out to everybody in that one track. And I'm really unhappy that we didn't do that. I think we, looking at this situation, and knowing that that's a senior development, and that they are very, they have been very outspoken about this development, we should have notified that whole track, instead of taking it from the center where there's nobody contacted. I wish you would show that. Do we have that to show on, to show on the screen?
Mr. Leclerc, in our previous discussions on the development code, didn't we talk about, I know that we haven't approved the development code, but in this type of situation, she's exactly right. We wanted to make sure that we hit that entire track. We talked about sending it out to the HOA, so the HOA could distribute from there.
Correct.
So we are, you know, we were in the process of amending the code to take care of that problem, but you're absolutely right.
I'm just, I just wanted to, I don't want, I just think we need to really think about the residents when there's something like this that really affects a neighborhood.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
I think that might, I'm not sure. I think that might be what I have for staff.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
Go ahead, Chris.
On the, what would that be, southwest side of Antelope? The side immediately adjacent to this project, is there any parking allowed even north up there? Any parking, is, is there any parking allowed on Antelope at all? Even going up north towards the oasis?
No, there is no parking.
And then, that would, that would need to be clearly marked, because you're going to have parking along there. And then a question for Mr. Leclerc. This has a conditional use permit, and they want to extend it from one to five years. Is, what's the conditional use permit for? Is it for alcohol, or what is this CUP on this?
It's my understanding you have three approved conditional use permits, one or two for alcohol, and I forget what the third one is.
There are two for alcohol. One is for the convenience store and concurrent sale of beer and wine, and another one is for, one of the buildings anticipated as a drugstore, which would sell beer, wine, and liquor. And then the third is for the exceedance of the zone heights for a few of the structures.
Okay. So if it was at one year, and they built this, they would have required to come back every year to renew their CUP for the alcohol? Is that right?
They're allowed a certain number of extensions, correct. If they did not invoke the CUP by not having the...
Once you invoke it, it goes to the land, right?
Correct.
Okay. So really extending it to five years, that's really extending the invocation of it, the starting of it. Okay, just wanted to make sure on that. Do we, has the... Do we, has the owner secured or heading towards any certain tenants in the majors yet, have they indicated to staff?
You should ask that question of the applicant.
Ask them that. Has the square footage, not building space, but the everything else, parking, walking area and all that, did we, so they've increased the square footage of the actual buildings, but the way they've reconfigured the parking and all that, is the net parking area smaller, and if so, by how much? Or is it larger?
I would anticipate, I'm not sure I have the exact calculations in comparison to the previous, but since there are more parking spaces proposed than previous, I would imagine that the parking area is larger than previous.
I thought there was less.
There is more parking provided. There were 787 parking spaces provided previously, and currently, I believe it was eight fifty.
Can you go back to your spreadsheet there? I thought you had eighty less than you had before.
Yes.
Seven eighty-seven previous and eight hundred and fifty-four now proposed.
Or eight hundred and eight under the reduced requirement, right?
Well, that's just what minimum required per their proposed revision to the parking requirements. But they are providing currently above what their...
So they're actual, that's mapped out as eight hundred and fifty-four?
Correct.
So there actually is going to be more parking spaces by eighty, eighty spots more? Okay.
But why, but I don't understand that, because they reduced it from five point five to five per thousand.
Correct, so within certain portions, they're required less. However, they are increasing the total amount of building square footage by approximately twenty thousand, or one seventy-one to one ninety-one. So that increase in square footage, despite their decrease in the parking requirements, necessitated them requiring more spaces, thus they then provided more spaces.
It was the requirement versus what they were really doing, so the actual numbers actually increased. Which is good, because that means that easier parking. Were there any changes or deletions in the architectural requirements? Because I remember when the applicant was here, the last meeting I had with him, or we had, that I was present, we really required them to put like the cap on the molding around the top and fascia, you know, improvements. Has any of that changed?
The only changes to the architecture were for the hotel, as noted with the reduction or the elimination of the larger roof element. The LA Fitness obviously has a new building and removal of the pads, and then the gas station canopy with that added roof element.
So it's actually increased the aesthetic, the architectural improvements have either, have improved then as far as like the canopy. You're saying the roof element, that's a new improvement, correct?
For the canopy, and then the LA Fitness and the hotel are revised design that could be somewhat subjective.
Now, there is an open seating requirement that we really pushed hard to have, and I noticed that it's, where is that section? Park Design Standard? No, not Parking.
Outdoor seating.
Yeah, what page is, there we go. So it had a minimum requirement of fifty-two, fifty, five thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. And on the old plan, we had kind of tentatively, you know, mapped out where those spaces would be. I don't see that on the new plan. Am I missing it? So you can see on the old one, you got some there next to pad one, and then we had some in front of pad two.
We can have the applicant run through where all the amenities are.
So we'll go through that, so...
And we did include that condition specifically to note, overall, they need to provide that square footage and that as individual tenants are identified, they could modify some of the footprint or possibly even, you know, the parking, you know, remove a couple of parking spaces to provide that additional outdoor seating area.
But that's not necessarily mapped on the new map here, though.
Not necessarily. There are some outdoor seating areas shown, but I don't believe it totally...
Oh, there you go.
It's hard to see all the trees.
Okay. Last question, hold on just a moment. I just wanted to ask Mr. Leclerc, what are your thoughts on the no bumpers in the parking? Is that a downgrade of the facility, or because it's such a small area, would we really not notice it? What are your thoughts on that?
I would not classify it as a downgrade to the area. You end up having just overhang over where the wheel comes to a stop, so you don't have that area between that curb and the wheel stop, which collects debris and other things in there. And it's very difficult for street, the typical contract parking lot cleaning facilities to get in those areas. The obvious solution is simply have manual sweeping of it. But it's efficiency-wise, it's simply easier to move the curb, allow the overhang. It just trades asphalt for concrete, so it's not a problem.
Well, you know how parking lots, you know, like you were talking about earlier, we have the minimum landscaping, you know, so you don't look like a big cement field, asphalt field, but this, I don't think this would create that effect.
Correct, it would not.
But the intent of the bumpers is to keep people from pulling their cars up onto sidewalks, right?
Correct.
So...
But you have to expand the area. You end up with the same walkable area, just more concrete as opposed to a step-down asphalt between where that concrete ends and where the curb, where the wheel stop is.
But conceivably, the concrete that you just added, you're covering up at the front of a car that's pulled up to the curb.
Correct, but you've widened that area in the first place. Yeah.
I think that's all I have for now. When we get the applicant up, I want to ask him about the tenants. That's it.
Okay, all right. We'll open the public hearing at seven fifty. Madam Clerk, is the leak republished?
Yes, sir, it was.
Any additional correspondence on the item?
Yes, we received two letters from Helen Alexander and one from Marty Rosen, provided in your blue folders.
Okay, I did not get a chance to review those. Can you speak to your letter? Thank you. All right. Mr. Markham?
Chairman, Larry Markham, representing the applicant. And possibly in reverse order, we have Mr. George here from LA Fitness to address you, should you desire. That is a signed lease. We also have Mr. Goyle here, who will own the service station parcel, and also will own the hotel parcel. And Mr. Goyle is a service station operator, and will be more than happy to address you on that portion. With regard to the other inline space and the pad space, we do not have signed leases at this point. Mr. Miramontes will be working on marking at the ICSC convention this year, both spring and fall. After this, we've been basically focusing on the LA Fitness change. And so that's been the major focus of the efforts to date on the changes. And going sort of back to the comments on the curb, we just feel that the changes that we have requested reflect a better design than what the old county ordinance is that effectively is in effect today, which is with the bumper blocks, which not only are a maintenance problem to sweeping the parking lot, they also are a trip hazard with regard to people not seeing them in front of tires and stepping on them and tripping and falling. It's the same, as Mr. Leclerc said, the gross parking space, if you will, remains the same. It's just whether or not we're trading it for a bumper block in front of a curb or letting the car come to the curb and hang over, you know, the two feet, which is the requirement, whether it be concrete or whether it be even some sort of low landscaping. If it is landscaping, we don't get to take credit for it as part of our landscaping calculation. So it's just an efficiency matter. With regard to the end spaces and the step outs, that sort of has evolved over the years in the county ordinance. Originally, there was, about the only requirement was to have an eleven-foot space at the end of a parking row where you had a vertical obstruction, i.e. a trash enclosure wall or an end wall or something of that nature. So you could literally, so you'd have room to maneuver out of the space and make your turn back out. That was before the requirement came along to have a minimum five-foot, you know, or planters adjacent to the end parking spaces. And then the requirement came along with regard to the step out, you know, in addition to the curb, having to step out, and there's been different interpretations, whether that's a one-foot step out, which is six inches and six inches of the curb plus six inches of concrete in the planter, or it's six inches plus another foot. What I think was showing on the overhead was, or on the computer, was what we prefer to do, which is to pour that monolithically, because if normally you form the curb, you compact underneath the parking lot areas. You typically don't compact in the planters, so things will grow. And then the curb, that step out strip gets poured on uncompacted material. And we've had very severe problems with those cracking, settling, that type of thing. So we now spec them, or our landscape architect and our folks spec them as a monolithic pour so that makes sure that you get to compaction underneath there and you don't get the cracking and degradation problems. So, and that's just, you know, something that we've talked with staff about literally for a number of years and also talked to county staff. I would strongly encourage you to take a look at it as part of your development code, you know, update as far as changing your parking standards. On the, one thing we did do, and I think pursuant to our later meetings with Mr. Thomas and Ms. Sobek, we did incorporate all those changes. That corner monument, even on the flat side, is about sixty feet long, not including the wings, you know, turning around the corners. So probably the overall monument is about, probably in the vicinity of eighty feet total that was shown.
It was three-dimensional, I believe, too, right?
We, at the request of the enhancement of the corner monument, that's what we did with the trellis scene and that type of thing. And there's actually two front rear elevations there, so it does have depth to it. And that was all a result of the subsequent meetings that we had with the commissioners after, I think, our initial commission hearing on the last extension time on the plot plan and the reapproval of the CUPs. The CUPs were reapproved. The current standard is that we would have the ability to obtain the additional extensions of time on the CUPs. We're just basically making it all one approval, so we're not back here before you on a year-by-year basis for those, basically, those operational CUPs. One CUP started out life as being for the, I think, the height on the hotel plus the architectural featuring on the buildings that was above the old specific plan code minimum or maximum. And then it, obviously with the hotel change, that dropped off. So it remains for the service station alcohol sales, basically for like a drug-type use, and for the alcohol and gasoline sales. So that remains, and those are in place today as part of the old plot plan.
Quick question, what's the height on the trellis here on the corner monument?
Do you have it?
Approximately? And this is on the corner of Newport and Antelope, right? Right, to screen the gas station, the back of the station.
It's set up to screen the gas station and the drive-through and the car wash, yes. The center top is seventeen feet high.
Okay.
And then it drops down to, I'll put my glasses on.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, on the lower.
On the two middle wings.
And then the third tier around, it sort of wraps, is about ten feet tall. So it's a pretty substantial, pretty substantial monument, which I think what was the commissioner was looking for.
That was the intention.
That's big.
And going to the hotel and the entry to the hotel, and possibly you could put that back up, Russell? The driveway. Basically, the way that driveway is set up, the right-hand lanes as you come in, it is a unidirectional driveway going underneath the future hotel port of share. So the only people that would be going to the right in those double lanes would be the people going to the hotel for, you know, the purposes of entering the hotel port of share and to, you know, pull into the areas to, you know, to register. Everybody else would be going in the through lane, if you will, into the parking lot and coming around if need be. That is the backside of the LA Fitness. The other side is the public side, so that is basically the back of LA Fitness, so to speak. So we don't think that there'll be much in the way of confusion there. We don't see, we don't see that there'll be that much traffic. We actually think the next driveway down, the right-in, right-out driveway, and the second driveway, which is also signalized, will be the primary entrances to everything else. So we don't see that there'll be that much in the way of conflict there. And we did, as Rafael said, we ran truck turn radiuses at forty, fifty, and sixty-five, I believe it was, around the entire center and around all the rear and all the driveways to make sure that they all worked without any further modification to the plans, and they do all work. So with regard to, and I think we did, as I think it's been stated, as Russell stated, we did modify and enhance the canopy for the service station with the roof feature that you see. I would think it was another topic that came up at the previous hearings.
Can we pull that up? It was before it was flattened, now it has the angled, okay, there you go.
Previously, it had basically the prototypical Chevron, you know, type band, if you will. And this is the enhancement that was requested.
I thought we also required that the wainscot go up higher on the poles. I almost...
That one I don't recall.
Yeah, that, I believe we did.
I don't recall either.
You know, yeah, I think that was on the ARCO, but I thought it's something that should be talked about here.
And with regard to the hotel itself, on the reduction in height, there was discussion about a reduction in the number of floors. I think the final condition was a reduction in height, but not a reduction in floors.
Well, I'm not feeling comfortable with that, and I...
And it will be coming back to you, because we don't know, in today's world, until we get a hotel provider or not a concessionaire, they will come back to you. You'll have to come back before the planning commission, and they will have to go through that with you as far as the architecture and the number of rooms, and the number of floors for that matter. But that was the direction we had at the previous commission, was to reduce the height, but not reduce the floors. Because if we do reduce the floors, then it will reduce the number of rooms.
Well, I know that they have quite success at our communities that are south of us. But I do have, you said that you don't have anyone for the hotel yet?
You have a lot of interest, but we do not have somebody signed.
Can I ask, you know, with this new LA Fitness, why you're stuck on having a hotel there when it, you know, it's...
We feel, well, we're having substantial interest from hotel concessionaires. We think it will be a very attractive, Mr. Goyle can speak to that, because that is, will be his parcel. But he has had substantial interest from different hotel chains as far as coming to the site. And that's been a premise from day one, and actually has been something that's been discussed with the golf course for a number of years, dating back to the purchase of the property.
Well, I have a, when I looked at the map and I saw the LA Fitness kind of stuck out in the middle of the parking lot, I was kind of like, why didn't they remove one of the out partials, one, and, or move it along by the major one and two? I mean, to me, it just, when you put it there in the middle of the parking lot like that, and then you have the hotel behind it, it kind of gives me the aesthetic view of like the hotels in a back alley. And it, and then you've got this big, this big fitness centers right there in the middle of the parking lot. And then as you go around the curve on Antelope, when it curves on down that end, as I drove by there and really looked at it, I thought, oh my goodness, those people that live in that housing development at that end have lived there for twenty-five years, and now they're going to have these two huge buildings blocking their aesthetics, the view that they have, and it seems so much closer to those houses than major one, two, and three over here, because they're closer to the freeway the way it curves. I just, I couldn't understand why you put it there. It, to me, just isn't, as a normal, everyday resident, I just, I thought, it looked like to me you were cramming as much as you could in this little area. And it just, to me, it didn't seem like it was quality development. It's like you're, we're trying to settle, we're taking away the parking bumpers, we're wanting to delete the cement, eighteen inches to twelve outside the cars. It just seems like to me that we're just, we're settling. Instead of, everyone that I talked to, they want quality development. This is, we've talked about this before, that this shopping center is really a unique situation being next to two senior communities. And I really feel like we need to take that into consideration. And I really feel like we need to take that into consideration. But, but, but I envisioned, you know, I was really disappointed when I saw the LA Fitness in that area there, because I kind of envisioned when we talked before, when you, when we talked with you with Chris and we sat down, I kind of envisioned that as you drove down that end and we did have to have the hotel, we did talk about three stories with a beautiful roof line, pitch roofs, with some nice architecture, that there would be like a little greeting area of green belt and a fountain, and it was aesthetically pleasing and welcoming. And now, it, like I said, it just seems like it was a hotel stuck off there in the corner in, in an alley.
Well, the hotel is, is, is pretty much in the same location it always has been. The, the one move of the hotel that has taken place over the life of the project for the past almost ten years was that originally we had the parking on the east side, on the Antelope side. And I believe planning staff at the time, actually at the county, asked us to move the parking to the, to the freeway side and move the hotel more, more forward to the Antelope side, because they did not want us to have the parking on the Antelope side. So the hotel footprint has stayed appreciably the same over the, the life of, of the project. We think, we think it will be quality development, we think LA Fitness will be quality development. And, and we, we think that in order to, it have, it has the front of LA Fitness sort of facing the rest of the commercial development. The, the hotel is sort of its own unique use. And it will, you know, people will come to the hotel, the hotel is a destination, LA Fitness is a destination. And, but we see more of a synergistic effect to have the hotel facing the remainder of the project and creating that critical mass of, of, of interest and use from basically from LA Fitness south to the, you know, to the first driveway coming in off of, off of Antelope. So, we feel that it, it works very well and, and basically what we did was, if, if you go back, Russell, if you could go back to the original site plan, if you would, you know, we're basically taking a series of, of isolated pads that were out there before on the, on the current approval, and basically combining those and creating a space for the LA Fitness. Yes, the, the number of square footage, square foot of total building does go up, but also the parking goes up, because we're getting a more efficient parking field, if you will, relative to not having to serve those individual building pads. So, that's why we can do both. We can actually increase the square footage, because a big chunk of that is, is absorbed into the LA Fitness building, and also then the, the, the more efficient parking field that we're coming up with, so.
But, I thought we, I thought I had heard, and a question was maybe asked in conversation, that, you know, these pads, they would bring in a restaurant, which would be nice for the seniors and nice for the hotel, but now you've got an LA Fitness, so you have no opportunity for a nice little restaurant there. I just think, I, the LA Fitness is where it's been placed, I, I don't feel there is a good flow. I disagree with you. I, I, I really don't. I disagree.
From, and from, from a marketing perspective and from a design perspective, we feel that the site plan works. We, we do think that there'll be a, a strong possibility, and probably a stronger possibility, of some of the isolated pads out in front of becoming food, casual dining, and, you know, sit-down dining, that type of thing. And, and also too, in the way that, going to one of the earlier comments or questions about the outdoor seating, we're basically, in our discussions with staff, is that each one of those we will look at for the potential for outdoor seating as those come along, especially the food-related uses. So we would see, in addition to the areas that we committed on the original plan, and which is mostly some of the NCAP space that would be dining, we would also look at some of those, those isolated pads, but also on a, on a pad by that basis as they come in as food, would have outdoor, uniformly have outdoor seating attached to them.
Well, I just know from my experience, staying in a hotel, you walk to the restaurant, usually. It's usually in a nice location. I don't, I just don't see this LA Fitness where it's placed here being aesthetically pleasing. And again, you've got two large buildings coming around that curve that are very close to those houses that back up right against Antelope. So I, I just wanted to, I, I just, I really just didn't understand this layout, and I was really displeased when I saw it. And I thought, I'm anxious to hear from the community, because I know a lot of people don't like to cross the freeway, maybe LA Fitness on this side might be nice for the seniors to have that, but I think there needs to be some more work here. Thank you.
You, you had also touched on the outdoor seating. Commissioner Thomas asked about the location of all the outdoor seating that, that, that we talked about. Can you kind of show us where all that's at?
Actually, at, at the end, if you have a better view of, of, yeah. We've shown the outdoor seating there, which was, was, was an increase from the, from the prior version of the plan. And then we did have one other one, but also too, we started looking more at the, we think there's more probability of food service uses in those isolated pads, and that, and the anticipation is that, that they would then carry with them the outdoor seating in, in those individual pad locations. And we're, you know, we're committed, as, you know, we were requested to be, to having as much outdoor seating as possible. The outdoor seating would be primarily driven by the food service uses. So, and we think, again, we, you know, we don't know what those out parcels are going to be. We have had interest from, you know, food-related uses, and once we, you know, flesh those out, then we would have to come back and get a modification, you know, to the site plan to show the specifics of those particular outdoor, out, out parcels, and incorporate the outdoor seating that has been, had been desired, so. We're not, we're not saying we're, we want to, we want to back away from that commitment. We just see it more, being more effective as, as, on a parcel-by-parcel basis quite possibly, and the NCAP spaces.
But then I believe Russell earlier stated that as each tenant became and they did their lease, and depending on what they needed, that he said possibly would there be some loss of parking spaces to do the outdoor seating. So?
Could be a some minor, and that, that was one of the reasons why we bumped the parking space count up. And, and at the same time, so if we did have to lose, you know, any occasional half dozen spaces or so per pad, we would have the capability to do that and still meet the parking requirement.
I have a question, Russell, on that. It says here that a new condition approval's been added to prior building permit issuance to ensure this is being addressed earlier in the process. So, if the first things are going to be built are the gas station and the Fitness, before they can build, they would have to identify these outdoor spots, right? Because you're talking, you're talking about seeing what the, you know, the, what the out parcels are going to be, whether they're going to be food or not. So, you're really going to be kind of forced to figure that out before those tenants come in on those out parcels? Because you're going to have to figure out this, this outdoor before that building permit is issued, is that correct?
That's correct, and that was the intent of adding that condition prior to building permit, permit issuance, so that it's thought of upfront rather than after the fact, once the building is built and, you know, soon to be occupied.
So, I mean, that's something you need to think about, Larry, that?
Well, we will have, every commercial project goes through a series of iterations as far as, you know, the, as, and they're tenant-driven. We will be, I can guarantee you that, you know, the, the final version of this plan will look very similar to this, but it will not be identical to this, because we will have different uses that come in, that will have different requirements and different demands, and we will be back before your staff and before you as necessary to make those changes, to accommodate those tenants. And as Russell has said, we will be conditioned to go through and basically do almost like a running tally on the parking to make sure, because I think there was a comment earlier about, well, are we taking out parking and, and will that, you know, limit it? Actually, what'll happen is, it might at some point set the, a cap. If we had a very high intensity parking use that came in, it might quite possibly not be permitted, because if we exceed our parking requirement, your staff would say, you know, you cannot, you cannot bring that use onto the site, because you will not have enough parking spaces. So we have to do like a, like an ongoing running tally of the land uses and what those land uses require in parking, and, and compare it to what we have on the site and will have on the site.
Do you, do you see any of these, these parcels, these shops, the buildings being like a sit-down restaurant at all, or are they even big enough size?
Very definitely.
Well, then, that, it has the, being that there's a buffer already in the parking, is there enough to say a diner, a small diner comes in in parcel one, is there enough already built in for that high intensity of use?
I'd have to verify with the parking analysis prepared by Kuntzman as far as how much they incorporated in their assumptions as to the square footage of restaurant balance amongst, you know, retail uses, as far as how much, you know, whether out parcel one and two were, were both assumed to be sit-down restaurant, or, you know, they assumed four of them were all restaurant, or even just maybe just one of them were restaurant.
And it, and it will be a moving target.
At, at least the, the parking analysis, sorry, prepared by Kuntzman kind of sets a baseline of, this is what our assumptions are, and as tenants, you know, are identified, that parking analysis will be updated to confirm that adequate parking is still available on the site.
And, and the entire center, other than the hotel and the service station, will have, you know, reciprocal, you know, parking available to them. So, it will be, it will be looked at as a whole, not as, you know, as the individual uses. So we would anticipate, the parking analysis showing we need seven-ten, I think ordinance-wise, we're showing that we would have a minimum of eight-oh-eight if we stayed with, and basically what we did was, we mirrored the Donahue Schreiber project as far as what is in their plan, which is five per gross thousand. Basically, the five point five per thousand is basically looking at the fact for, the fact that you will have potential food service-related uses, you know, allowed as part of that. We sort of went one step further, did the parking analysis. We didn't see that we'd be up to that five point five, you know, per thousand, although we're actually very close, we're like between eight, eight-eighty-two and eight-fifty-four, Russell, I believe it is? And we're actually within twenty-eight parking spaces, I believe.
I, I would just caution that on, on the outdoor seating, that was a, a big priority for me, and when the, and also the community came, because it's, the desire is just be kind of a walk-in and, you know, go to coffee, sit down, more open space. So, be thinking about that, that, as, that's a big, big issue for you to have community support.
As those uses, Russell, come in for those out parcels, will those be administrative decisions?
As long as the footprint wouldn't substantially change and they're consistent with the architecture of, that's shown for the, the parcel buildings, it would be an administrative review through building permit if I'm, or, sorry, a minor plot plan.
Minor plot, okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
I, I, when I first got this, I took a look at it, and I frankly don't like the design at all. I'm going to tell you the reason why. The normal traffic goes from south to north on Antelope Road, and you've got this huge building sitting up here that's effectively blocking the hotel. I would, my opinion would be that I would take that building and put it down here where out parcel one is, facing in the same direction, and leaving this space here with what you had there previously. And here again, I'm not an architect or anything like that, I just don't like the visual aspect coming from south to north and looking at that building. And I agree with Commissioner Sobek, that it renders the hotel as being in an alley. And you're not going to see it with a building of this size. And so, I'm just offering that. Maybe you could take a look at that and see if there's another way you can face this building without having it stuck out so close to the residential areas for one, and then two, blocking the viewscape from south to north. And that's my only opinion on that. Thank you.
Let's, let's ask Mr. Markham, if he's talking about taking the Fitness and put it where one is, and then that would open up so you could have another out parcel?
Exactly.
Right along Antelope. Has that, have you analyzed that option, or tell us why you think that wouldn't work and would work?
You know, I, I do not recall that we have analyzed that option either in the, the very first version of this, this plan, back when it was in county days when we first submitted, actually had a Fitness use on the property. And it fell by the wayside during the interim period of time, and it just has returned in within about the last, you know, twelve to eighteen months. I, and unfortunately, our architect is out of town today, and also Mr. Maramontes, who has been the one that has been dealing with the, the locations of the buildings, is also out of town and will be back, so, this, this Friday. So I can't, I can't specifically answer that. I certainly, we will certainly, you know, take it back to Mr. Maramontes and, and the architect and ask them those questions. I don't know, the representative from LA Fitness is here, they may have comments with regard to how they were, as I have seen of the building cited.
They're not architects.
But I can't, I can't tell you if that was, if there were other options looked at. Not that I'm aware of, since this has been resubmitted as a, as, as the revised plot plan.
That may be something you want to look at, because then if it's along the freeway, I think you would have more community support when it's not sitting right in their front yard. You've got the backside of a big building along the freeway, which is kind of what you want, and you would still get your, possibly your same number of buildings if you moved number one possibly over to Antelope, so you're not going to lose your square footage. And you may even have improved traffic flow, because I am concerned about the flow coming in off of Balsa there. That's, it's kind of like driving around, you just got such a tight turn there. I know you've done the traffic a little bit, it's just awkward. It is, it is rather awkward.
And, and I feel it's only going to get worse. I see that happening already. I've actually talked to our city engineer about it, because I've lived here for twenty-five years, and when they, on the Ralphson Shell Station, there's a exit there that comes right out onto Newport. And twenty-five years ago, it was okay, but now, those cars come out and they want to go over, all the way over into the third lane and make a left onto Antelope and try to cross there, and it's just a nightmare. And, and you know, this traffic is only going to get worse. But I agree with Chris, I was also concerned about the traffic flow from one of Russell's pictures, how it used to go all the way to the end, and then now it, you had dead ends, and it's, I think, if that LA Fitness was backed up there against the freeway there by the out parcel one and major one somehow in there, I think you would have a better aesthetic view, it wouldn't be in the neighbor's backyard, you got it against the freeway, and I just think aesthetically it would be a lot better.
All right. Larry, do you have anybody else from your team that you want to bring?
Mr. George, you wish you could address the commission?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm Greg George, and I'm the real estate vice president for LA Fitness, here to answer any questions you might have. I can give you just a brief narrative of, of what our, our design standards are and our requirements were for this location. It's a little bit of a unique site just because of the tiered up shape. And our goal was to, while we like to be in a, a shopping center with a lot of retail synergy, there was, the desire from the developer wanted to keep us somewhat removed from the lineup of, of typical anchor tenants. So that, that's the reason why we were pushed quite a bit to the north. And it does give us good visibility to two fifteen and also good visibility to the, to the entrance, the main entrance to the center. You know, your idea of turning the location and, and backing it up to the freeway a little bit is, we're certainly open to that. It's, the desire, the goal would be to have a club here, so we're certainly flexible. I've been working on this with the developer for about the last two and a half, three years, and I'm not sure who else he's talking to, to be honest with you. I think there is some momentum now, and like Larry said, I think the upcoming shopping center conventions in, in San Diego last week, and then one in Las Vegas coming up in May, probably be a little bit more retail activity. But at any rate, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Just, does LA Fitness, this isn't about architecture, LA Fitness, do they cater to seniors? Like, I'm aware that seniors, through some of their insurance programs?
Right.
They can go use certain facilities for free?
Yep.
And, and I, and so, do you have a program like that?
I know twenty-four hour has a, what they call, I think it's called a Silver Sneakers, something like that. I know twenty-four hour has a, what they call, I think it's called a Silver Sneakers, something like that. And, and it does work with the, with the insurance companies and we're working on a plan to do that. That's, I think, certainly as I get older, I'm, I'm looking for opportunities like that and I think, and we are as a company as well. I can't a hundred percent say that this, this club will offer a free service. It's not really free, but it's part of the, of the insurance payments.
I just, yeah, the insurance. That is, that's, you know what? You're coming into a senior development there.
Absolutely. Understand.
Two fifty-five and elders and that, and there's a lot of baby boomers.
Right.
And like, and I just think that that is just a really, that needs to be a priority.
Yeah, I think, I agree with you. The, the whole industry is really changing. It's going more towards group X classes. Spinning, yoga, Pilates, a lot of that. And we're offering that full service under one roof at a very fixed low rate. So. But that's definitely one thing we're looking at.
Do you think our community is large enough to handle another big box fitness chain? We've got one down the street.
Well, I, I personally think that you've got almost a hundred thousand people in the city. And our typical clubs have memberships about eighty-five hundred clubs or eighty-five hundred members per club. We've got six hundred and fifty of these clubs from coast to coast. And so we, we have a lot of data and a lot of research that we've done on this particular location field that would be a very good location. We like the low, the freeway proximity because the majority of our, our business is done in the, in the peak or the PM hours. Going home traffic, that's really our, our biggest time. Hours of operation, we like to be five in the morning till about midnight if possible or twenty-four hours if the, if the customer demands it. But I don't think that's going to be the case here. I know the other club does, I think, offer twenty-four hour service.
Yeah, and, and that's another concern there being with, near the senior community and those houses backing right up. And I'm, I, I agree with Earl, I'm not an architecture, actually, I'm not an architect. But somehow I hope that you'll work with them and see if we can maybe look at a different spot for that on the property.
Do that.
I appreciate that.
Sure. Any other?
Yeah, could we go to the slide about the, the circle on the top and the backside? A concern we have is the incomplete circle. I've actually noticed that in some other, driving around different LA Fitnesses and other places. And I looked and thought, oh, they never finished it. It looks like someone forgot. I thought, would the framer forget something back here? But I don't know if that's a cost issue or what, but that's, that, in my opinion, has to be finished, the round portion.
That, this came up several months ago and I thought we had submitted to the city a revised elevation that did show that. But that's something we can certainly take care of.
I would complete the circle.
We wouldn't just leave it, yeah.
Especially if you're, if you're facing, if your, your behind is going to be at the freeway. And we have standards for, as far as, you know, screening of the back doors and the, and the trash. We don't want it to look like a back door. So. What's that?
Four sided.
Four sided, yeah, the four sided architecture. So that would, that would definitely be a condition.
Not sure how, if that's going to be real visible, but I, I hear what you're saying.
And then, on the, that's it for the LA Fitnesses, going back to the, the gas station. In, in the other AMPM we approved, we had them put the Wayne's coating or the rock all the way up the pole. So I think, I don't know what the commission thinks, but that was a definite improvement and I think we had to talk about that as well.
Yeah, and not the flat roof of the.
Well, they, they improved it to the, to the next one. Can you do the next slide?
Yeah.
There you go.
That's what we got.
But as far as the, the rock, it's only goes up like three feet. It really needs to go up most of the way, if not all the way. And you can vary the color, I don't care. But it's, it takes away from that industrial look and brings more of a country, natural look.
Any other questions for Mr. George? Anybody else? Okay. Larry, you good?
Just to come back after the public comment.
Okay.
But, thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and take public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have a?
Yes, sir. A.J. Novak.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Novak. I'm here to address the proposal you just discussed about the fitness center and gas station. My neighbors and I believe that we consider this a redundant area for these particular services. We feel there's plenty of gyms available in the area already and we already have gas stations in the area. So our belief is that these were not the services that we're looking for to go across from the Oasis. And as a new resident of Menifee, I'm highly vested in making sure that we have a thoughtfully planned out community. And it's really important to me that, that we think about having a city plan that is, that is put together specifically addressing where we want to put specific services. I moved from a city that hired a city planner and she turned around the city a hundred and eighty degrees. Took a twenty block area downtown, took the new car dealerships and moved them outside the city limit area. Made it a walking downtown area, listened to the citizens, brought in citizen committee, citizen committees and volunteers and discussed what services they wanted. And turned it into a beautiful walking downtown with both fast food and high end restaurants, boutiques, shops and theater. Made, made it beautiful. And it was done during a two, two year period of time. We really would like to have something similar for, for our city. We like to have a viable, specific master plan for Menifee, which would attract the type of residents that we feel would enhance our community. And I'm sure many of us would be happy to help with this plan if, if asked. Some of the ideas that have been brought forth that we'd like in that particular area include stores like Sprouts, Barnes and Noble, Barrett's, Mimi's Cafe, Polly Pies, a fish house, Sizzler, Olive Gardens, Spaghetti Factory, those kind of things. And one thing I also wanted to mention that when you were discussing go karts, electric go karts are also available. So where I came from, we had electric go karts who didn't have the gas fumes that you have with the gas go karts. So I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Toni Guinness.
Thank you for letting me talk. Toni McGinnis from the Oasis. And after listening to your presentation, it made me kind of think, this, this project you're giving should be on the other side of the bridge. We have plenty of room up by Han Bradley. Our community is a sleepy hollow community. You're bringing in a fitness, we have one up by Stater Brothers, there's one up by Canyon Lake, there's some in Marietta. We're going to be hearing all this noise twenty-four hours a day. And I know you're working, we've put all of our life into our homes. You're working for what we have right now. And I'm sure you don't want to walk out of your community and look at this. I'm from Orange County. I know there's a lot of people now that the baby boomers are going to come out here. They can sell their homes for big money, come out here, they're going to come to our community. This, they're not going to be driving into the Oasis or Palmyra with all this sitting here with a hotel, gyms, and the hotel has a gym. The people that go to stay in a hotel don't have to go to fitness. They have, they offer that in the hotels. We would love to see like a Fresh and Easy, Sprouts, nice restaurants, something that we don't have to go over the bridge to have to utilize. And I know someday you guys are going to be where we are and you'll feel the same as we do that we, we don't need this to bring down the value of our homes. And this definitely, a fitness will bring down the value of our home. Thank you for letting me speak.
I have no further speakers on the side.
All right. Larry, you want to wrap up?
First of all, with regard to, you know, a Menifee master plan, this is a part of the Menifee specific plan and has been since the early eighties. And as adopted by the county and as implemented by both the county and the city. There's certainly some of the uses that the two speakers have, have proposed that are certainly would be potentials. And we don't know whether or not they, you know, they will come here. We will certainly make every effort at the various and sundry ICSC conventions now that we would, you know, get a plan adopted to pursue those. And we will pursue those in concert with your economic development director and city manager as they attend those same ICSC conventions. I, I think in, owing to the fact that Mr. Maramontes is not here this evening and Mr. Underwood is not either. I would request that we continue this matter until two weeks, until the twenty-second. And I will certainly take all this input back to both the owner, Mr. Maramontes and, and also to our, our architectural group and work with, with LA Fitness to see if, if we can come up with a modified site plan that would address some of the concerns that we've heard here tonight. So that would be our request at this, at this juncture, if that's acceptable to the, to the planning commission.
I have a question first. Commissioner Phillips earlier pointed out, if you possibly would put it where old building one was and leave the other buildings the way they were, the three or four pads. I'm looking, the size of LA Fitness actually could go where major two is. And you could leave the rest the way it was. Because my concern is when we approve this concept here, okay, now you came back, you're changing it. We're getting rid of a couple of pads, we're making another big major two. What in the future, okay, once you do the LA Fitness, you do the gas station. What's to say, oh yeah, we're going to keep major one, two and three. And these out along Antelope, you'll consolidate the other three. Oh, we don't need them. We need another big LA Fitness or whatever you want to call it, major two out in the middle of the parking lot and we'd be back here again.
And I don't think that's a possibility. I mean, usually the pad space, the pad parcels usually have a tendency to be the more viable real estate at the end of the day. So I don't see a further consolidation of that into another major of some sort. The other problem too is, is when we do, anytime we do put a major, and that was a major design premise with county planning from day one, was that we do not have loading docks in those types of use and trash, you know, trash enclosures backed up to Antelope because of the proximity to the residents across the street. So the, the design you see today was, was really driven to a large degree by, by the planning staff and, and their efforts to, to present a, you know, the attractive side of the project to the, to the residents across the street and to the driving public along Antelope. Don't see that happening, but we'll certainly take in consideration a potential move to LA Fitness and, and in that location as well.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. You want, you want to take comment from the rest of the commission before we continue?
Sure, very definitely, yeah.
All right, we, we had one more speaker.
Yes, sir. Anzel Bolles.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
They came up while you were talking.
What's your name again, ma'am, real quick?
My name is Anzel, O-N-Z-A-L, Bolles, B-O-L-E-S. And I'm a resident of the Oasis. And I just, LA Fitness doesn't fit into our sleepy time town sort of like on our end. But I'm more concerned about this traffic and the impact of that kind of activity coming in and out. Plus the hotel and the gas, gas station with the traffic we already have at Antelope and Newport. It's already really bad. And I don't know, nobody's talked about how long it's going to take before this development starts. But we've also got a freeway that we're in the process of starting to build and that's going to be an issue for quite a long time as well. But I'm really concerned about the traffic going in and out of the areas from Palmyra and Oasis residents having to deal with that on a day to day basis. We have a lot of traffic already from the college that do illegal turns in the area now where you're going to have a gas station and a hotel. So I just think you really need to look at the, at the prospect of the traffic and how that's going to impact us as well. Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at eight forty, was it eight thirty-eight? Bring it by in the dais for discussion. The applicant has asked for a continuance. Are there any additional concerns that we want to notify the applicant of before we do that?
I, I have one. Depending on what they do with, he comes back hopefully with the, you know, moving LA Fitness. Yeah, if he.
Relocation.
Yeah. Even without that, even if he does relocate that, my concern is the, the, the traffic coming in of Balsa. One thing I think you should think about is, and I've seen this in hotels all across several states that I've stayed at. Like Commissioner Lees Meyer was saying, when he comes in, they're going to be confused that going to the left is really a two-way, you know, it's in and out. I would make all of the, once you come in and all the driveway that starts going towards the canopy, the second it becomes that should be stamped or painted or something different. So it's literally visually looks like something completely different. I personally, when I'm pulling in hotels at ten to thirty, eleven at night, I would be turning to the right, maybe when I maybe wanted to go to the store. So, so anything that's, that's not part of that in and out, the two-way that they're coming out should be stamped or something differently. So that's a thought there. And then I wanted to share a thought with the commission. As far as the hotel height goes, I was one of the proponents, proponents of only a three story. But my big concern was more the, not so much the story, it was the height. We don't want this monstrosity sitting across from hotels. But one thing we need to remember is if we get it too low and the footprint's not big enough, we will end up with a motel six, which draws the wrong crowd. So if you develop it in a way that is a high class hotel, you're talking a Marriott or even a Holiday Inn Express, something like that. That draws a higher income. Client. And he's not going to come to a motel six. So we thus must have a slightly higher footprint, more architectural improvements. And do I want a hotel across from me? Not necessarily. But if I don't want a motel six, then I got to gussy up this hotel a little bit. So I understand the community's concerns, but I want to get the best client we can that's going to be in front of your houses. So to do that, we need to let it have the forty-five foot space. Will require some nice architecture, but I want to get the safest, best person in that hotel as possible, just seeing how the economics of it work. So I just, so the community knows we're listening. We know you're not real thrilled about the hotel. But we want to make it as good as we can. So that's the thought process that I'm going through. I want to share that with the commission. Okay. And then we're, we're talking about moving that as well. So we can hopefully make everyone happy. Those are my thoughts. And I would, I would move to afterward discussions for the continuance.
Any other comments?
Well, I've, I've said a lot tonight and I just, I would like to hold off and, and again, as Mr. Markham recommended. I, I did like with the, I think it was A.J. who mentioned about it being beautiful and a walking area. I know we talked about that before. This is a unique neighborhood. It's, this shopping center has the potential to be a really nice neighborhood friendly, walkable, beautiful shopping center. And I, I'm, I'm, I would like, Mr., is it Maramonte?
Yes.
To really think about these people who live here. I don't know where he lives. I don't believe he lives in the Oasis and I don't.
No.
No, Mr. Maramonte. I don't believe he lives in the Oasis and I don't believe he lives in Palmyra. And so we, we just really need to take into consideration these residents in this neighborhood, the unique neighborhood. I liked also what they said. They gave you ideas about what they would like. Everywhere I go, you can talk to anybody in this community. They want something like a Trader Joe's, like a night, Fresh and Easy, like a Baron's. I, I have, I go down to Temecula's, one area where my daughter lives. And where she lives, it's a beautiful walkable neighborhood. But then adjacent to it is a really nice shopping center that has, that she doesn't have to drive far. It's, it's really nice to have that balance. So I'd like to see that balance here. I'd like to see it beautiful and like to see it walkable.
Yeah, I, I would kind of echo some of the same stuff, Larry. I know that, you know, I know you've been in the business for a long time. And I, I recognize what you're saying about the hotel being its own use. And it is a destination. People aren't going to come and go in a hotel like they will at a grocery. People aren't gonna come and go in a hotel like they will at a grocery store or anything else. But, you know, one of the big sells on this project was the out parcels and the capability of having restaurants where the residents could walk over there and go have their morning coffee and, you know, hang out and do that sort of thing, and by putting the building up on the front, we've eliminated one of those opportunities. You know, in a property of this size, I mean, I just want to say to the entire commission, the entire room, you know, this, a property of this size is not going to just serve the Oasis and Palmyra, so we have to take into consideration the impacts of this across the entire city. We also do, since this is directly across the street from the Oasis and Palmyra, need to take into consideration, obviously, those residents, but those residents will never be able to sustain this property by itself. We have to recognize that as well.
Well, we do, I do recognize that, but they are, they are homeowners there, and they want the property values, I'm sorry.
So what I'm, what I guess what I'm echoing as well is, maybe if we look at rotating that LA Fitness over to the out parcel one, like Mr. Matelko said, and bringing back some of those amenities to the front of the property. I will, again, say that that's a big concern there with that Balsa Road access point. You know, if this is going to be a neighborhood commercial center that's gonna serve that property and serve Palmyra and serve the Oasis, I think the circulation needs to reflect that coming off of Balsa Road, and the residents over there need to be able to get in and out very easily without the confusion of the hotel driveway. So when we rotate LA Fitness, can we look at that driveway as well?
We're definitely noted.
Thank you.
And if I may, technically, the public hearing is closed, but I think if you're gonna continue, you're gonna reopen it anyway.
Well, and I wanted to ask, Mr. Leclerc, and you as well, are you sure you want to continue this to date certain, will you be able to make revisions in time to split the date certain?
We will very definitely jump on revisions as quickly as possible. So I don't know what your calendar looks like from this time, when available dates, but...
No, we can handle any of the standard Planning Commission meeting dates.
So the only, the reason I ask the question is, we, I think we followed your standard noticing provisions, you know, for this. If you wish for us to expand this to include all of the Palmyra neighborhood, we can certainly do that. If there is a desire to renotice it and continue to another, to a date, you know, to a date certain with the renoticing, we can certainly do that too, if that's, if that is, you know, more acceptable, and it's, I'm hearing that from two of the commissioners up there, so...
That would be difficult for the staff to accomplish...
Two weeks, yeah.
In the two weeks.
Right.
It might even be safe to say, and Ms. Sobekin may agree, it's probably pretty public at this point. I'm sure the rest of Palmyra knows that this is going on now. And the Oasis, yeah.
What about letters to the homeowners association and let them disperse? Or are we stepping on legal toes there?
No, you can do that if you, if the commission directs it, fine.
Would that be something you could do, Larry? Is this make sure that the HOA's?
Very definitely. We had, when we were, during the original project, we held community meetings to discuss the project with the Palmyra Association, time back in two thousand eight, nine, when the project was first approved. So we have no objection to that, so we can send a letter to the association. And if it's, you know, if it's to your first meeting in November, that's fine too, if that's, if that works better for the, for the commission.
I'm thinking that that might be good, just so that the associations, I'm not sure when their deadlines are for their news letters.
If that's okay with you, Larry?
Appreciate that.
It would be November twelfth. All right, we'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing at nine forty-seven. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, just one quick question. Did you have a question?
Nope.
Being that, so you said you have a signed lease with the Fitness?
Yes.
And then, obviously, the gas stations that go, so what's the approximate timing? Say, November twelfth, you get a blessing and you're going for it?
Well, we've worked extensively, we had a meeting as recently as three-thirty today with your public work staff and planning staff to talk about phasing, and we would be coming back with a formal phasing plan, which you would see again. The, sort of the general potential is, we will grade the entire site at one time, other than possibly the construction yard, which we have given over to the interchange contractor out there right now. And then we would, the anticipation would be that LA Fitness and the service station would be the first to proceed forward with building, you know, precise grading plans for their specific pads, building plans, process those, and get to the point of issuance of building permits, and then there'd be probably, I'm guessing we would be somewhere close to like initial occupancy of possibly LA Fitness, probably, and I really can't speak for LA Fitness, but just the estimate was approximately mid-year next year, or mid-year sixteen, somewhere in that range. We'll have a few, a couple of months where the grading...
Sixteen, fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
By the time we get through, you know, grading plan check, building plan check on the individual pads and individual building plan checks, and get those precise grade plans or permits certified, it's just a, you know, it's a several-month process to prepare plans and get through that. So I think we'd be looking at somewhere in the vicinity of mid-sixteen. And we've already discussed how we would, if we would proceed forward ahead of your interchange plans, how we would, we'd have to take a look at the, we are widening, and I think that should be noted to the, to the public, we are widening Antelope Road for a dedicated right turn lane and dual left turn lane southbound from Antelope to Newport. And so we are, we will have that dedicated right turn lane to get on Newport going westbound. And it's just a, and we've agreed to, we'll work that out between the city and ourselves about how we would do that, if we would be there before your improvements are there on the, on the approach ramp, or if you go first, then basically we have free rein to go ahead and move forward. So we're, Jonathan and I have had numerous discussions about that as recently as today. So I'm guessing somewhere in that timeframe, as far as initial occupancies, you know, mid-sixteen, just by the time it takes to get building plans done and through the process and construct, depending upon whether LA Fitness or the service station, those will be the first two uses. And then the anticipation would be the inline space would probably come next, given this particular plan, the inline space would come next, and then probably the pad parcels would follow, and then probably the hotel would be, it'd be later, but unless we do get the interest, that might accelerate. But that would be sort of what I would envision as far as the potential, you know, stream of development out there, so. We do, and it also is noted for the public, we will be building signals, so those access points coming out of Palmyra will become now signalized access points, so they will have the ability to have a controlled intersection to exit the, you know, their, you know, that area. So it will no longer be the, basically, turn, you know, when traffic is available to you, you will have access out there with traffic signals, which we will be building, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then to, what's the word again, or is it, each of those, three of them have to be continued?
Do we need to continue, or is continuing an entire item?
Just continue the entire item.
And I'll make a motion to continue the entire item for all three resolutions to date certain, November...
Yes, November twelfth.
Twelfth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll go on to item nine point two on our agenda, and we'll take five if anybody wants to leave real quick.
What's that? What you're gonna do?
Huh? Told you that was clear early.
No, it's okay.
It seems like it's evolved into, we're just gonna have to, up the receiving, the restaurant.
Have you redefined it then?
I think you might want to raise it at the next, because we're certainly gonna raise it.
Good, no, I'm glad. I, that was my understanding, so I guess he's interpreting it.
Yeah.
Make a note.
Well, it makes sense. You know.
It's really longer?
Well, I don't know if it'll take longer, it'll be more contentious.
Really? Everybody's excited.
You know, from the planning.
Oh, from the commissioners.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. They don't, they don't, they don't like it.
So they're just gonna be here for it in and out to go to the city council in the afterwards?
Does this one even go to the city? No, I think this is approval here.
Then it would be appeal.
It could be, correct, yeah. No, this is approved. So we'll see.
This is gonna take longer than five minutes at the rate this is going.
Luckily, I only have to drive back to Orange County after this.
I have to drive to Apple Valley.
Is that where you live?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. How long does that usually take?
Depends on the construction.
Yeah.
I've had it take three hours after these meetings.
Oh. What time do they start construction usually? Is that night?
About nine o'clock. About nine, but there are so many different construction things going on between here and there...
Really?
That you've got several different things happening.
Fifteen being expanded, different spots?
Going up the Cone Pass, you've got three different construction things going on, one at the top, one in the middle, one at the bottom. You've got construction on the fifteen over here and, you know, going towards Corona.
Yeah.
You've got all this that's happening over here on the two fifteen. You've got whatever's happening on the ninety-one there and...
Yeah.
Whatever that is.
Ninety-one fifteen.
Where they've got the bridge, the, you know, the new railroad tracks that they put in, and the other things that they're doing there. And the night that took me the three hours, we had the construction here that fed it down to one lane, we had an accident that had fed it down to one lane. I was, they had the road closed off to the ninety-one, so I had to go all the way over to the fifteen, going up the fifteen, they had it cut down to one lane where you just get where they were merging, and then going up the hill, they had it slimmed down to two lanes. It took forever.
What time did you actually draw something?
That time, because we were out relatively, it was about twelve-thirty. It was a relatively decent council meeting, so...
Gotcha.
Didn't get out too terribly late, but that, you know...
There's no traffic, it took an hour then?
Hour and twenty minutes, hour and twenty, if there's no traffic whatsoever.
Yeah, I actually got here in an hour and twenty, this morning, which is kind of surprising.
Yes, this morning was the first morning in the last five days that I had, where I didn't have some kind of accident or some kind of a problem that slowed me up. And that was after, on coming home on Sunday from my stepdaughter's home in Provo, where between State Line...
In Provo?
Yeah. It's a nine-hour drive. It's a nine-hour drive. Well, she just had a baby four weeks ago, so we're busy.
You gotta go.
Yeah.
That's still quite a drive.
Yes, between State Line and Barstow, five hours. Bumper to bumper traffic, just nudging along.
All right, let's try and get underway here if we could. All right, thank you. Let's move on to item nine point two, the Plot Plan two thousand thirteen dash two ten, International Auto Crafters. Mr. Leclerc, you have a staff report for us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, a staff report will be given by Lisa Gordon.
Good evening, Lisa Gordon presenting International Auto Crafters, it's Plot Plan two thousand thirteen, two one zero. The project site is located right next door, north of Han Road, south of Salt Creek, and east of City Hall. The zoning of the site is the Newport Hub Specific Plan, Planning Area Three, which designates the area for industrial park. The surrounding zoning to the north is Water Course, Watershed, and Conservation, and to the east, south, and west, it's all the Newport Hub Specific Plan. The site is currently vacant, to the north you have Salt Creek, to the south you have vacant property, but there's currently an application in process for the Menifee Union School District offices. To the east you have vacant property and the two fifteen freeway, and to the west is City Hall. The Plot Plan is a proposal to construct a new seventeen thousand automotive body shop, including offices on a one-point-three-acre parcel. These are the elevations for the building. The, they are utilizing earth tones, concrete tilt-up, they've added windows since you last saw this. These are two elevations, the one on the top will face City Hall, and the one on the bottom will face the freeway. This is a rendering of what the project will look like from Interstate two fifteen. You would be looking west. And you just received a eleven-by-seventeen size copy of this exhibit. This is the proposed landscaping plan. There are a variety of trees on the north, east, and west property lines. We did review this to make sure that there would be adequate buffering and that trees would be evergreen. The project also includes approval of signs on the building and a monument sign. The lettering hasn't been determined yet, but we've added language in the conditions of approval to specify language or lettering type, channel lettering. One sign would be facing Han Road, and the other would be facing, be on the east elevation facing the freeway. This project was presented to you at a commission workshop, March eleventh, two thousand fourteen. The commission expressed concerns regarding the location of the business and aesthetics. Since that meeting, the applicant has made changes to the project, including removal of the roll-up doors from the east side of the building, which faces the freeway. All roof-mounted equipment has been screened, and additional landscaping has been added to the rear and east property lines to provide additional screening. Something to consider with this project is the parking. Under Ordinance three forty-eight, one hundred and nine parking stalls would typically be required for this project. The applicant's experience with its other locations in Riverside County indicates that one hundred and nine parking stalls will not be necessary. Excessive or unused parking areas are disfavored because they needlessly increase impervious areas, which increases runoff and absorption of runoff. Areas could instead be used for landscaping that would assist with water quality treatment and general aesthetics of the project. The commission has authority to reduce the parking requirements otherwise required by the ordinance if there is evidence to demonstrate that conditions warrant a parking reduction. If so determined by the commission, the approval of this plot plan will include the parking reduction. To confirm and validate the applicant's claim that one hundred and nine parking stalls are not necessary, staff did survey seven nearby jurisdiction parking requirements for automobile repair services. Out of all of the cities surveyed by staff, the city of Lake Elsinore's parking requirement for auto uses was about the average and in line with the director's experience with this type of use. The applicant has accordingly provided sixty-six parking spaces on the site plan. Staff recommends that various minor changes to the plot plan exhibits be identified and implemented through the conditions of approval. Implementing changes in this manner instead of required prior to the Planning Commission is recommended because the issues are considered minor changes, and they address mainly aesthetic matters and proceeding in this... and they address mainly aesthetic matters, and proceeding in this manner will keep the project moving forward. So there are changes that need to be made to the exhibits, and we're conditioning for them instead of requiring them now. And these changes include requirements for the lettering of the sign, modifications to the monument sign, adding a masonry cap on the trash enclosure wall, lighting types and placement on the building, and minor changes to the landscaping plan. Staff did receive comment letters after the preparation of the staff report, and that included a letter from the South Coast Air Quality Management District. They request, requested additional operational analysis of spray booths, solvent cleaning operations, and motor vehicle coating operations. Uh, the applicant did prepare an update to their air quality study, and we incorporated the findings in the mitigated negative declaration and sent that to South Coast Air Quality Management District for their review. And they, uh, sent an email saying that their comments had been satisfied, and that is in your folder. Uh, we also received a comment letter from Pachanga today about four o'clock to thank the city for working with the tribe on the mitigation measures. So it was a thank you and just a request that the mitigation measures and conditions be included in the environmental documents approved by the city. To just verify, please let these be in the final. At this time, staff recommends adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and adoption of Resolution PC fourteen-one-eight-two approving the plot plan. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions of the staff report? Earl, do you have questions of the staff report?
No.
Um, all right, well... I, I do have one. You mentioned a signage I saw on, on the building, and you mentioned a monument sign that'll be in front of the building on Han. Will there also be signage on the monument sign that points out the hub? You know how they have it on the freeway, on the corner, or keep?
Uh, they're not proposing that. They're only proposing the monument sign in front of the property and the two on the building. Uh, the Newport Hub does have the large freeway monument signs, and anybody in the hub can, can get a panel on that, and that would be up to the overall landlord of the hub.
So there is no issue with that, right?
No.
Okay.
I did have one, one concern.
Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, on, uh, page eight of forty-three, uh, we have the item number nineteen that says, uh, no outdoor storage is allowed on the site. And then it goes through and gives the standard list. And I was just wondering, um, somewhere in our, or some, one of our ordinances, we discussed outdoor storage for commercial use. I had a real problem with that. But now, um, we see it again. And I was wondering, private use and commercial use for storage containers.
It's not allowed in this?
Right.
Okay. Well, I don't understand your concern.
Well, I was just wondering how come it popped up? Because I thought we had exempted commercial facilities from having store, outdoor storage containers.
The ordinance regarding commercial and industrial uses and metal shipping containers did not change. So currently, our ordinance is, is that a metal ship, if a commercial or industrial project wants a metal shipping container, they need to process a plot plan or conditional use permit to add it to their site. Um, we put this condition on a lot of projects where i- it's to let the applicants know clearly that they can't just add these things to their property without coming to the department first and getting a clearance.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Question after her.
Go.
Uh, can we go to, I don't know if you do have the plot, this plot plan up there? Do you have this? You just pa, there you go. Um, in the corner there, just north of the paved fire turn, department turnout, it says pervious gravel area, no proposed, somebody says a plant over.
Yes, forty-eight hundred square feet.
Why, why is that pervious gravel, why is it not paved or cement or something?
The applicant chose not to pave it. They didn't want to create additional runoff areas, um, and that's what they wanted to do, so.
So it's a, it's a basically gravel?
Mm-hmm.
If I could add to that, I believe, uh, that is also part of the water quality management plan for the project. So they need to provide a certain square footage of, uh, pervious surfaces, which could be pavers, decorative pavers, or landscape areas where they, it could incorporate some, uh, ground cover. So in this case, what they have proposed is a pervious surface area.
Is it kind of like a bio swell area?
Like an infiltration, right. Uh-huh.
So that's forty-eight hundred square feet.
It's...
Yeah. It's kind of big.
It, it is based on however calculation, or, uh, they did a, a particular calculation to find out how much area would be needed to do the infiltration.
Oh.
And this is the area that came out.
And it looks like there's some trees planted in it, so does that have some kind of a curbage or something? So it's designated that it's not going to be driven on? Is that what you're saying?
To give it a little bit more, uh, pleasing look at the same time, and, um, and you're right, just to, to, to not make it as a drivable area.
Can they add some other plants to that?
Um, they certainly could. Uh, right now, the water quality management plan is still preliminary. So prior to issuance of their grading permit, they will be required to do a final one. And we can do, certainly make some comments to, um, probably add some planting materials in the area.
So all the runoff goes to there?
Yes. Uh, the flow actually goes northeast before ending up into Salt Creek Channel.
Is the whole, the whole area, see where it says, uh, it has, it says the wording pervious gravel area, da-da-da? That I can see, and then the area north of that, north of that dotted line, is that the same material? Is that all gravel too, or is that dirt?
No, that's a basin that'll be hydroceded.
Hydroceded, okay. And so say somebody needed to, had a long trailer, and they needed to back in there. Is that going to be flush with the parking lot, or is it going to be a down area that it couldn't physically be backed into, or?
It's not meant to be driven into. That's why the fire truck turnaround is, is located where it is.
But could it physically be driven in though, such as it's the same, like, here's the parking lot, here's the, here's the hydroceded area? Could it be backed and ended up being things parked on it, or is it such of an elevation that it goes down that it's a nonusable area?
It would be difficult. There's going to be a wrought iron fence proposed between the parking area and the basin.
Oh, okay. That's all.
Right here.
Hey, one other question. Uh, as far as the surface runoff, it's going to be increased once you start waterproofing this area. Now, uh, over there, there's two culvers, thirty-four-and-a-half inch in diameter. And I was wondering, did your calculations include the amount of water projected to run into those culvers?
I'll defer that question to our engineering department.
Or, um, if the applicant's engineer is here who prepared the water quality management plan. I don't have the actual plan with me right now, but we could certainly check into that.
Okay. That was a concern because that area severely eroded already.
Okay.
And, uh, when you start adding water to it, we're going to end up with a problem.
And, and, and just, just for clarification, Earl, just being that we're at the entitlement stage, uh, final engineering and design doesn't usually take place until at least they have some sort of entitlement.
Okay.
They may have, they may not have actually concluded all their drainage studies and analysis for the project yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, um, concerns on the, uh, staff report? Okay, we'll open up the, uh, public hearing at nine-twelve. Madam Clerk, this is legally published?
Yes, sir, it was.
Any additional correspondence on the other?
No further correspondence.
Okay. Um, would the applicant care to speak? Anything? Anything to add?
Hi. My name's Harvey Ryan, and my brother and I are the owners of the, uh, proposed building. Uh, we had the workshop, um, we listened to your comments. We took six doors out of the building, not just on the east side, but also on the, on the other side, uh, facing Han Road, uh, so that the building looks nicer. And our architect, uh, put some glass in it, made it more, look more retail. Uh, we actually increased, uh, the landscaping. The pro, the proposal that we've received is, is a hundred and two thousand dollars' worth of landscaping, which is a substantial, um, increase from what we presented at the workshop, uh, because we heard your concerns. Changed, um, the screening for the roof so that we won't see anything from the freeway. Uh, we have gone up the freeway, taken pictures, uh, from the freeway, uh, from the north, and have taken pictures from the, uh, across the freeway to look at the property. I have them if you want to see them, but I know you've driven it before. But my point for that is, is that you can't even see this project until you get two-thirds of the way down the hill because of the trees, uh, that are, have mature trees that have already grown at the edge of the, um, I guess that's Salt Creek. Uh, and when you do get to that elevation, we'll have an eight-foot wall that will, uh, block anything that anybody can see in addition to the landscape, uh, that you can see that we've had a rendition done from the freeway. I guess that's really about it. I, you know, told you before, um, we're, you know, we're a, my brother and I own four locations. Actually, three locations. This will be our fourth, but we do have a satellite location here, which we consider our fourth. We're involved in communities. Uh, we're not like a large corporation that comes in and takes from communities. We're involved in student of the month, as a matter of fact, uh, in this community because of our involvement, um, with our satellite location. Uh, we believe in giving back to the community and not just, uh, taking from it. We're, we're involved in Rotary, um, Chamber. We're a member of the Chamber here at, um, in Menifee. So, um, just to let you know that, you know, we, we, we are involved in the community, and we don't just take. We, uh, we believe in giving back to it. I think that is about it. And I want to thank your staff, by the way, for giving us direction, because we don't do this for a living. We, uh, we're in the body shop business, and we're pretty good at that, but when it comes to this, we're terrible. Uh, and Lisa has been awesome and guiding us through it and kind of hurting our team altogether to make this happen and, uh, giving us direction, and we wouldn't be here if it, if wasn't for your staff. And I really want to compliment you on it because, uh, we kind of went through a little bit of a construction thing in one of our other locations and, uh, had some help from the city staff there that did a great job for us too, but didn't expect to get it here, and we did. We really, really appreciate, uh, Lisa and, and, uh, putting up with, uh, all of our questions and, and concerns, so, uh, that's it. I don't know. Okay. Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing at nine sixteen. What are the commissioners' thoughts here? It looks like they've... Sorry?
I was just double-checking that there were no speakers.
Okay.
And the mic was on, sorry.
And there were none?
There were none.
Okay. Sorry. Looks like they made a lot of, a lot of changes here with the landscaping, even, yeah. Questions, concerns, comments from the staff? Question? Sorry?
Well, I want to thank staff for doing the researching for the parking. That I, I enjoyed, um, having that comparison as I read the report. Um, and I want to thank, uh, International Auto Crafters for, for working with the city and, um, addressing some of our issues. I, I don't know a lot about your paint, um, auto body shop and the, what the smell is like. And I know there's, there was an air quality review, right? I, I just have a little bit of a cons, I have a little concern that I need, um, to feel better about this, about the compatibility at, at this side of the hub with the school district coming in and being next to City Hall and having medical offices just down here. And besides the medical offices, we have the, um, the medical center for the dialysis. And so that's a little bit of my concern with this type of business, um, being put here in the hub. And I don't have those answers. And so I, I'm looking for maybe a little guidance there from, from staff or, or from you if you have answers to those things. So that's, those are a little bit of my concerns and questions.
I'd like to address that, if you don't mind. We have, as Harvey said, we have three locations. We have one in Marino Valley, next to Marino Valley, um, um, shop is a medical building. And there is no odor. We, it's well-filtered before it even comes out. You know, it, it draws in clean air, um, it's gone through filters, the air goes through filters. You go by any of our buildings, you, you would never know it was a body shop. There is literally no, no odor to it. Uh, most of our paints or the base coat or our paints are water-based, so there's no solvent. There is solvent in the clear coat, but it's minimal, and the paints are, are water-based. There's very little odor. It's, uh, it's well-filtered before any air comes out of the booth. And you would know, you wouldn't know it if you went by the Elsinore shop and it, you know, welcome you to come by anytime. Uh, or the Marino Valley location also. I'd be glad to show you.
Sir, can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Harry Ryan.
Can you state your name? Oh, thank you.
Can I answer any, any further question on that?
Well, I just want to say it's all regulated by AQMD. I mean, you know, they, we have to go through a certain process. We have to have certain equipment. We have to have heaters. We have to have burners that, you know, qualify. And we can't, you know, it's in the, actually in the conditions, and we just went through it today, uh, at the eleventh hour with the AQMD, because they were concerned about some of the numbers that were in the report. And we went back, uh, with the gentleman that we do business with, uh, with all of our locations that handles our environmental end of it, and they went through the numbers again, and there was a mistake in the original report. And they wanted more information. Well, he gave them that information, and they concurred with it and sent us an email today that said, okay, everything's okay. But when it comes to the permitting process, we have to jump through the hoops that the AQMD makes you jump through, which is you have to have a certain amount of equipment. They measure, you know, the, the, uh, the emissions coming out of the booth. I mean, uh, we've had sound level checks done in, in our facilities, and we have no issues with sound or with odor or with any emissions coming out that shouldn't be coming out. In, in the future, they may put in some other, you know, heaters or newer equipment or new requirements, but at, at this point, um, we're, you know, we, we're compliant with all of the AQMD rules. And, and as, as Harry said, uh, if you ever want to come by the locations and see our operation, we're, we're not, you know, what everybody thinks a body shop used to be. Uh, we're a professional organization, and, uh, we, you know, we, we value our neighbors, and we, we don't, you know, we don't spray outside. We spray inside a booth. It's got airflow in. It's got a vacuum inside the booth, so no air gets out. The air comes from the top. It's a downdraft booth, goes over the vehicle and down into filters in the ground, then gets filtered before the air goes back outside, so it's, it's pretty clean, professional. It's a very professional operation and a very clean operation. And as he said, their water-based paint, no, sir?
I, I, I'll, I'll add something to that too, Lisa. Their, their consultant, uh, Mr. Brady, is the former city manager of Lake Elsinore. And, uh, he contacted me about, I don't know, a week or two ago and asked me if I wanted to come by and take a look at the building and see the operation. Obviously, whenever somebody invites you to the property, you're suspect, because all of a sudden they're going to run around and clean everything up, right? So the first thing I did was said no. Um, I did a surprise drive-by three or four days later, and, uh, they're right. You, 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 there are no cars outside. There's no smell. It looks like the rest of the industrial park in Lake Elsinore. It's a, it's, it's a pretty clean operation. I will give them that. So I, I just wanted to share that with the commission that I did do a surprise drive-by and, and took a look at it, so. It's, it's a pretty good operation, and frankly, I was even surprised at the parking. I'd be surprised if they have more than thirty spots that they're building right now, and, and they're half vacant, so. Anyway, just wanted to share that with the commission. Are there any other, are there any concerns with the project?
Yeah, uh, the, the ongoing concern is that, that this isn't necessar, one of the thi, the things we have to find... One of the thi- the things we have to find in our findings to make this legal is that, is it consistent with the general plan, is it consistent with zoning in surrounding areas? And there's some specific wording. Um, I like the project, I like what you've, you know, you've done to screen it and everything. I still have a hard time saying that it's compatible and consistent with the other land uses around it. Uh, being the, the medical nature of the buildings around us, um, it just seems kinda like, uh, out of place. That is my concern and I don't know if the, is the commi- if the staff can make a finding to say that it is compatible with, with the local vicinity, uh, projects around it. My other concern is that, another one is, is appropriate placement of facilities. I'm just not sure if I can find that here. I would love this project in, in another commercial area in the city. I'd rather have you here than some of the other places that I've seen that does, that do auto body. But that's my concern, is it still out of place for this specific plan, for the projects that are actually going in here? So, that's something I think I still need to think about, maybe talk with staff a little bit more. I don't know what the commission's thoughts are on that.
Those were my same thoughts. Um, I mentioned that when I was speaking about the compatibility of the area and, and I agree with you, Commissioner Thomas, that what, they did a really nice job in a, in a nice layout here and they did a lot of improvements, but again, um, not, the compatibility of this area of the hub is a, is a concern.
And I'm always uncomfortable, as I said earlier, with some staff telling a business, "Don't build, we want businesses." But I also have to think what, what is the big, in the big picture, what is meant for certain areas? What is our planning goal? And I don't really see it being consistent here, so that's what I have to weigh it against, so. Mark, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think after the, um, workshop that we had and we made some suggestions, I think they went back to the drawing board and they came back with an exceptional presentation here with everything that we asked them to do. I think they went above and beyond and I don't see any reason to deny it.
I, I know we talked about this, Chris. You, you know, the, the reason that I, I would not find this to be a compatible use would be because of the likelihood of, uh, cars and debris and, and, and having an adverse appearance in a business park, but, but having driven by the one that I did in Lake Elsinore, um, they run a clean operation and, and I'm, I'm gonna go on a limb and, and ride with Mr. Metelko that, that I think they've done a pretty good job here. And not, not saying that going along with his riding on a limb, but I just, uh, but, uh, you know, I, I hear every, I hear you both about, about, you know, the body shop and the stigma of, of the crashed cars and I was a concern of mine in the beginning too. Um, but, but I feel differently having driven by their property unannounced to them and, and seeing what they had out there. Um, they've done a great job. I know that these oak trees out in front in this picture look like they're about a hundred years old, but, um, that might not be an accurate portrayal, but these pine trees definitely do screen the building and, uh, it loo- it looks very nice.
Well, are those, he had made a comment, are these existing pine trees? Are they that tall?
No, he's, he's talking about the eucalyptus on the north side of the riverbed. You can't, you, you actually cannot see it, I drove down that road today. There's eucalyptus trees all stacked right there where she's moving the arrow.
Oh, I see, okay.
You, you can't see anything until you get right about the middle of the bridge.
And are plantings of these trees, is it gonna be typical where you go into a, a commercial development or even a residential and they go, they show all these trees in the drawings, but then when they plant it, it's about a, you know, it's about a three-foot stick and, and grow out as ten years? So, what is the proposed planting on that? Maybe the applicant can answer that. Are you gonna plant mature trees, five-year growth? What are you talking about? Because if it's gonna take ten years, then we are looking at a bunch of cars.
Well, that's no. Uh, actually, you, you, you wouldn't be, but, um, it's probably a five-year, I would say. You know, maybe a little less even, but you, you, with, with the, um, without the trees there, there's an eight-foot wall. And by the time you get to the freeway portion that you can see, I used the post office wall as a, as a, a guide. And the post office wall is eight feet high. And when I could see this piece of property, I looked over at the, at the post office wall and you can't see their backyard. So, if, even if the landscape wasn't there, you wouldn't see the backyard. You'd see the back of the building, but you wouldn't see the backyard. And I've got some pictures and I don't know if you're interested in seeing them, but these are the freeway pictures and you've all seen them because you've driven down the freeway. But, uh, those trees that I was talking about are in, in the, on the other side of the, uh, riverbed. And you, they're, they're big enough that you can't see the property until you get down probably twenty, maybe fifteen feet above the property on the freeway.
And, and just to piggyback on that, by the, at that point, you're, you're going seventy miles an hour and, and your glimpse of the property is, uh, fifteen seconds, so.
One thing I would like to request is at least a continuance. I don't wanna say no, I don't wanna say yes. I'd like to think about the improvements you've suggested, the drawings and the things and, and consider it, um. My initial thought coming in was, was no. Uh, I've softened a little on this, but I would like to think about it more. I'd like to request a continuance at least and talk to staff a little more and consider, uh, consider it a little more.
Commissioner Phillips?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
This actually is zone, in zone three, which specifically says auto body repair.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's legal.
If your concern is, you know, that it's not zoned for that, it, it is.
Okay.
Commissioner Phillips, yes?
Yes, uh, I, I'm inclined to, uh, go with what Commissioner Metelko said. They have done a tremendous amount of work there. And then too, we must keep in mind that, uh, this is not the only automotive facility in the hub. We just had one that's going up right next to the Circle K, if I remember. So, I'm looking at a multi-use area as far as the venues that are located in it. So, I don't have a problem with them, uh, based on what they have shown here. There's a lot of work that was done there, so I don't have a problem with that.
There's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, you, hold on a second, Mark. I was, there was one other thing I was thinking about asking about. You know what, you addressed it already with the, uh, the, the rock that we talked about at the back. It was addressed with the, with the rock, you said there's a wrought iron gate that goes around all that. So, the, the, the likelihood there of, of them being able to park there is, is not what I thought it was. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a mitigated negative declaration based on the findings incorporated in the initial study and the conclusion that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment.
Second?
There's a motion as second?
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Sobek?
I have a question. Um, if we, if I wanna, if I don't wanna deny it or approve it either, if I would like to continue it, how do I do that?
You vote on the motion on the floor. Meaning, you have a motion, you have a second. Um, you could a- offer an alternative motion, a continuance, and if you get a second to that, you can vote on that. If you don't get a con- a second for that, then you have the option of voting one way or the other or abstaining. Um, this is the environmental document. You can approve the environmental and then have a motion to continue the public hearing for the rest of it as well. And if you get a second, you can, uh, vote on that.
Having said that, and, and in the same camp as her, I'd request the, the commission...
But right now, we're in the middle of a vote.
I know, but it has to do with, uh, uh, offering an alternative vote, so it's legal. That, eh, the other commissioners, out of respect for, for us, allow a continuance and you can still vote on it later, but it lets us have some more time to talk about it and think about it.
So, is Commissioner Sobek offering an alternative motion to continue the item to a date certain with a second from Commissioner, uh, Thomas?
I, I'm, I would like to make an alternative, uh, motion to continue.
Second?
Second, okay.
On the alternative motion, Commissioner Phillips.
Simply to clarify some things with staff before we come into...
Well, I, I guess, I guess my concern is, is what do you need to clarify? What, 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 on, on, what, what are the grounds for the continuance? What, what can you not answer right now?
Mine would be compatibility with the surrounding area.
Mine would be, how is this gonna affect other projects in the hub as far as compatibility? Do you understand?
Oh, yeah.
You've got a, uh, alternative motion?
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Commissioner Sobek?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Chair Metelko?
No.
Chair Lees Meyer?
Yeah, yeah, um, yes, that's fine.
So, motion.
And the date certain, I would assume, would be, uh, the next meeting? Which would be, uh, November, excuse me, October twenty-second. He's agreeing.
Thank you.
So, as far, having said that, I hope the applicant understands the, what's that?
Can you give the resolution as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So, do we just make a motion to continue that?
No, you're done, you continued.
Okay.
The item.
All right, so we're good with that, all right.
Twenty-second.
So, having sa- continuing that statement, I just wanted to clarify a few technical things with staff. It'll come back to the next meeting and if we can clarify those, then we're okay.
Okay. All right, we'll move to item ten point one. Mr. Leclerc, you have any, uh...
No discussion items.
And do you have any director comments?
Yes, sir, I do. You have been provided in your packet information relative to the social media question that you had had, that you had raised before. It's the one that looks like this. It's an example of how the city is using Facebook and, what's the other one? Facebook and?
Twitter.
Twitter, in order to, uh, get information out to the community about public hearings and meetings going on. And this is an example of how, um, tonight's meeting had been posted and responses that had been received. So, we are doing that, it is something that, uh, we weren't gonna wait till the development code changed since it's something we can do now. That seems a reasonable, uh, outreach to the community.
Just, uh, I would just add that in the future, they make sure that they put the right date. Because originally, they had posted the Facebook comment to be that, uh, the meeting was on Monday.
We, yes, we will endeavor to have the right dates sometimes.
I know, I know, I just, I wanted to give you a little blast. No, it looks good, looks good. Um, any other comments? All right, sorry. Uh, any commissioner comments?
Yeah, I just wanna thank staff for, for, I know, we, we kinda gave everybody a little bit of a hard time tonight. But I wanna thank staff for all the work that they do in preparing, um, everything for us so that we can be well informed.
Any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I think I'd like to echo that. I'd like to thank staff also, especially hearing from the applicants that, how well you guys are working with them and holding their hand and getting through the process. It makes things easier for us, it benefits the residents, you're doing a good job. I wanna say thank you from all of us for that. I have another comment. I remember reading a city email, um, I don't know, a, a week or two ago, had to do with KB Homes, that I believe their last model or something was being sold or something. And then it said in the, in the email that no more billing permits would be issued to KB Homes until they built the park, part of their development agreement. I'd like to know, are they gonna go ahead and build the park within six months, two years? Or are we gonna wait twenty years before they wanna build some more houses?
We don't have the timing on that park right now. So, it's be something we'd have to get back to with information on.
If you could, please?
I will try.
Thank you.
Um, I would just like to add that, uh, I, I liked what happened here tonight with the Menifee Lakes Plaza. Or, I'm sorry, it's not even, what is that, Plaza?
Yeah.
Is it Menifee Lakes, okay. You, you know, um, we, we have to be careful balancing, um, you know, the needs of the entire community, especially when we have a lot of residents show up for a project, uh, vocal about the project. You know, that, that property, like I said in the public hearing, will, will serve more than just those neighbors in that community. That's one of our hard corners coming off the freeway and our city is struggling to capture tax revenue. We need to, you know, remember those things and, uh, like I did say though, we, we also do need to listen to those people and balance that. And I, and I like where we went tonight and I think that we will find that balance. So, so I just wanted to thank the commission for, for working with that. I have nothing else to say and if anybody else does, we can take a motion to adjourn.
Well, I just wanna thank Lisa 'cause I hadn't even thought about rotating that building when she brought it up and, and it was, I'm glad you brought it up and pushed the issue because I think it will, like you said, address the homeowners' concerns, it will, um, I, I personally think it's gonna be a good draw as far as, you know, into that, into that, uh, that marketplace. Uh, so we're trying, we're finding that balance, so that was a good thing.
I think that was Commissioner Phillips' idea, the turn in the building.
There you go, good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you for the continuance.